Good evening and thank you for viewing the January 18th regular and special meeting of the Arcata City Council. The City Council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. We are opening this evening with a special meeting for the council to discuss employee performance evaluations for the city manager and city attorney, and for conference with labor negotiations with the city manager as an unrepresented employee. We will take public comment on these items now, and we'll defer the closed-session discussion until after our regular meeting. Are there any public comments on these closed-session items relating to closed-session labor negotiations?
You have two online when you're ready.
Okay.
One online when you're ready.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, call-in user, go ahead.
Hello, are you able to hear me this evening?
Yep, we are.
Thank you for my opportunity to comment on your closed-session items. I do appreciate that. So there's, I believe, three main things to be dealt with today. One is your employee performance evaluation of your city manager, which would be Karen Deemer. I did wish to compliment her on a very, very smart and very accomplished accomplishments she made here, which was to basically poach Tabitha Miller away from the county. Just so you know, Tabitha Miller is one of the most, the best employees the county used to have, and now you have it. So anybody who has the managerial skills to acquire very, very competent people and move them into your situation is great. Karen called me back last night after hours, and it's appreciated when you have a city manager who's willing to reach out in return for phone calls and communication, so I wish to say that about her. We probably will be working a little bit on some of your risk management, and hopefully that will be productive, and that will make her even more valuable. When it comes time to compensate your employees, I highly recommend that you look back to the last time they had a pay raise and come up with an index, such as a Consumer Price Index or something like that, and that would be the minimum that you would want to be increasing someone, so they're not losing the value of what they can buy with their wages. Regarding your city attorney, Nancy Diamond, I believe, still is, there are some things that I feel need to be looked at. Generally, as far as a competent counsel, I think you're doing well there for cities to use someone like Nancy. And again, we'll be talking a little bit more about risk management in the future. So my understanding is that you are then going to go into the labor negotiations, I guess that might be the pay thing situation for the city manager. Thank you for my opportunity to speak on that, and hopefully I'll hang around, I guess, to the end of the meeting. Do you report out live, or do I get that report out afterwards? That's a question for you.
We do report out live here in City Hall, but typically not hybrid on Zoom after closed session.
Well, I will get the report out then from you, Karen, tomorrow. Thank you, I'm not going to attend in person.
Okay, any more public comments on Zoom?
That ends my comment, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we allow closed public comment, and we will move to our regular 6:00 PM meeting.
Sorry, we did have one more.
Oh, we do have one more comment.
It's going up and down.
I take it back.
Shoshana, did you have something to say?
No, I'm sorry, I meant to do the public comment, I just came on, so I didn't notice, it was the wrong time, sorry.
Okay, great. So now we will close this public comment on our closed session and move to our regular meeting, and we will take up this closed session after the meeting. Okay, so we will begin our meeting this evening with a land acknowledgement. Oh, he needs a couple minutes, I'm gonna wait. Great, okay. Good evening, and thank you for viewing the January 18th regular meeting of the City Council. We will begin this evening with a land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning "over in the woods" or "among the redwoods." Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. If you would like to, please join me for the flag salute. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Schaefer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember Stillman.
Present.
Councilmember White.
Here.
While present.
All right. If you wish to make a comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods, or for an individual agenda item, there are three ways to do so. If you are here in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting public comment. And for those of you, I see that we have a packed house tonight that are not familiar with our early oral communication, that is a 15-minute time period, and we do have cards at the front here for the first four in-person speakers, I believe, and then we will move to Zoom and not go back and forth. So if you are wanting to make comment in that first period, grab a card, thank you. Okay, and so if you are here in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting comment, and if you are logged onto Zoom, click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on the item you wish to speak on, or if you are on the phone, press *9 on your phone to raise your hand, and then when it is your turn, you will be prompted to dial *6 on your phone to unmute. For each item, we will take in-person public comment first, and then move to online comments, and we will not going back and forth, so if you are wanting to comment, please line up at the podium, or raise your electronic hand as soon as public comment is requested for that item. So when public comment is called, please line up to make comment. Okay, we will now move to the next item on our agenda, which is ceremonial matters. And our first ceremonial matter is a statement in support of Central del Pueblo Movimiento Indigene Immigrante and the Sanctuary Garden. Since their formation, Central del Pueblo has brought the discussions surrounding immigration and human experience to the forefront. They have continued to promote and empower racial justice and equity all across Humboldt County while uniting a diverse group of people. The Sanctuary Garden provides a safe space for education, community, and resiliency within the city of Arcata. Central del Pueblo acts as the caretakers of the Sanctuary Garden, which was vandalized for the fifth time right before the end of 2022. The garden's welcome sign and bulletin board were knocked down, and the gate, which usually remains open and unlocked, was locked. To quote Brenda Perez of Central del Pueblo, "The impact of locking us out physically has been a recurrent practice of hostility against immigrants." On June 7th, 2017, Arcata passed an ordinance declaring Arcata as a sanctuary city. The ordinance stated that the City of Arcata's mayor and city council affirm and express that the core values of the City of Arcata include, regardless of nationality or citizenship status, creating a climate of welcome and inclusiveness, protecting and preserving the values of democracy for everyone, including but not limited to immigrants from all countries, people of color, people of all religions, gender identities, sexual orientation, people with disabilities, and all vulnerable communities. This still rings true. The Arcata City Council stands united in our zero-tolerance policy against all forms of hate speech and vandalism in our city, and stands in support of Central del Pueblo and the Sanctuary Garden. The Arcata Police Department has been investigating this incident and previous incidents of vandalism and hate at the garden, and anyone who has information or footage of this recent vandalism is encouraged to call the Arcata Police Department. Thank you. And signed today by myself, Mayor. Our next ceremonial matter will be a proclamation recognizing January 2023 as National Mentoring Month, and this will be read by Councilmember Atkins Salazar, and Florence Parks is here to receive it.
Whereas this year, Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the North Coast, CASA of Humboldt, and the Boys and Girls Club of the Redwoods celebrate the 138 combined years of service provided to the youth in Humboldt County, where together it is recognized that the future of Humboldt County rests on the success of its youth. And whereas, a mentor is a caring, consistent presence who devotes time to help a young person develop personal strength and achieve their potential through a structured and trusting relationship. Quality mentoring encourages positive choices, promotes self-esteem, supports academic achievement, and introduces young people to new ideas. And whereas, research shows that young people matched with a caring adult through a quality mentoring program are 55% more likely to be enrolled in college, 81% more likely to report participating regularly in extracurricular activities and sports, 78% more likely to volunteer, and twice as likely to say they held a leadership position than those who did not have a mentor. And whereas, youth development experts agree that mentoring is critical to the social, emotional, and cognitive development of youth, helping them navigate the path to adulthood more successfully. And whereas, our community has community volunteers, teachers, advocates, and many others who support the mentoring movement and work selflessly to improve our children's odds for success. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby recognizes January 2023 as National Mentoring Month, and thanks all local heroes who participate in quality mentoring programs to equip our youth with the tools to lead healthy and productive lives. The City Council also calls on residents to help close the gap between the availability of mentors and the number of children facing challenging circumstances who would love to spend time with a Big Brother, Big Sister, CASA Advocate, or Boys and Girls Club of the Redwood Mentor. And it is signed today, January 18th, 2022, by our Mayor Sarah Schaefer. And we have Florence Parks, who is here in person to accept this.
Thank you. Thank you, City of Arcata, and all of our civil service people that are here, and our honorable mayor and council members. We are so grateful for the time and acknowledgement to bring visibility to this amazing work that cannot be done without a league of volunteers and community members that purpose this work. Big Brothers, Big Sisters gets the honor of standing in the gap for young people, and how we do that is by providing formal opportunities for adults to invest in the lives of our youth. That through mentoring, one hour a week, it is proven that our children will have better outcomes. Every child in our community needs five positive adults to thrive. That could be two wonderful parents, an auntie or an uncle, but if that one relative is missing, that goal of thriving is at stake. So we, as community members, must stand up and stand in the gap for our children. We must do the part, take the role, and take it on ourselves to step up. It has always been that Arcata's mayor has been a member of Big Brothers, Big Sisters in the role. We've always had a council member or mayor that has been a big in our program. So we urge someone to join us again. We're looking forward to expanding our reach and impacting more lives. Currently here in Arcata, at Arcata Elementary, we have an after-school program where you can volunteer one hour a week with a child and be matched at the school site. And we have community-based program where you can go out in the community between four and eight hours a month with your young person. Please find out more about our program at our website. And coming up is one of the best of Humboldt events that we have, which is our Bowl for Kids' Sake, and this is how we fund mentoring throughout our region. So we need everyone to step up and make teams, and join us at Harbor Lanes on March 3rd and 4th. Thank you so much. This year's theme is Going Wild Zootastic Bowl. And so we are partnering with our zoo and doing some wonderful things just to elevate our local region and all the many gifts we have locally. So thank you for joining Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and celebrating National Mentoring Month.
Awesome. Thank you, Florence, and thank you for all the work you do throughout the county. And as a teacher, I know how important it is to make those connections with kids and everything that you do, so thank you. Our next proclamation is going to be read by Vice Mayor Matthews, and it is proclamation recognizing January 2023 as National Volunteer Blood Donor Month.
All right, City of Arcata proclamation recognizing January 2023 as National Volunteer Blood Donor Month. Whereas when asked, blood donors will most often tell you that they give blood to help others. Donors also say that giving blood makes them feel good about themselves, supports their local communities and hospitals, supports their community culture, and payback society for the times when they or their families have needed blood transfusions in the past. And whereas residents of Arcata are generous and compassionate people, in the United States, someone needs a blood transfusion every two seconds, and one in three people will use blood in their lifetime. Locally, 60 to 70 donations are needed each day to keep up with the transfusion needs of the community. Humboldt and Del Norte County residents donate on average twice the national rate, and whereas there are no substitutions or replacements for blood. There is a need for additional healthy, regular volunteer donors to join the ranks of those who already give themselves generously, and the President of the United States has declared January as National Volunteer Blood Donor Month. Now therefore be it complained that the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby recognizes January 2023 as National Volunteer Blood Donor Month, and urges all residents to pay tribute to those of us who donate for others in needs. The City of Arcata recognizes the Northern California Community Blood Bank and their efforts, and encourages residents in good health to donate regularly. A safe and adequate blood supply is our community's responsibility. January 18th, 2023, signed Sarah Schaefer, Mayor.
We're very, very lucky in Humboldt County to have so many blood donors, who, as you mentioned, donate on average twice as often as in other parts of the country. Rural health care is a challenge, and in many, many rural places in the United States, hospitals are served by blood banks that are hundreds and hundreds of miles away. And the difference that that makes is that if someone needs a much larger transfusion than normal, they could wait for many hours or even days to receive it. Here in Humboldt County, we're able to deliver blood to our local hospitals, oftentimes within minutes, so it really improves the health outcomes that we could expect in our community. So January is National Blood Donor Month. We are so grateful for our blood donors, including the ones in this room tonight. Thank you very much, and thank you, Arcata City Council.
Thank you, Kate, and thank you to all of our blood donors out there. Okay, that ends our ceremonial matters, and so the next item on our agenda is a report by Commission Committee, and so we will receive the Planning Commission 2022 Annual Report, and it will be presented by Vice Chair Scott Davies.
Good evening, is this on?
Yeah.
Good evening, I appreciate the opportunity to give you all a brief update on what the Planning Commission has been up to this year. I'm gonna keep my comments, my updates rather brief, and give some time for questions if there are any at the end. Before I start, I just want to acknowledge and celebrate the fact that the Planning Commission and the City Council are both up to full strength as we roll into 2023, so hooray for that. When I think about Arcata, I think about environmental stewardship, innovation, artistry, cutting-edge science, community, quirkiness, progressiveness, creativity. These are some of the qualities that make Arcata such a special place, and this very special place is under some real challenges right now, most notably sea level rise and our housing crisis. Both of these challenges are an opportunity and an invitation for us to use these same qualities to come up with innovative solutions, and we've done so in the past. The Marsh is a perfect example of this, and it also happens to be under direct threat from sea level rise and the housing crisis, in that homelessness is really distracting and detracting from the beauty and safety at the Marsh currently. In response to some of these issues, especially sea level rise, the city is finalizing its local coastal program, which was last updated in 1989, and the local coastal program aims to address sea level rise in a variety of ways. First of all, by prohibiting densification of housing in areas that are areas that are going to be most susceptible to sea level rise, encouraging it in densification in areas that are less vulnerable, creating a new trail system around South G Street in the Marsh, which could not only expand the existing trail network at the Marsh, but also double as an eco levy at that part of the city, and considering alternative uses for some of the highest-impact areas in the city, especially along the bay. Much of the work that we did in 2022 was taken up with strategic infill development, as you know. Much of this work was focused on the general plan updates and the local coastal element, but most especially the Gateway Area Plan took a lot of time of the Planning Commission. The strategic infill development is going to guide Arcata and our development for the next 20 years, but is also going to give us the opportunity to be, sort of, take the reins and be in charge of the state mandates over housing and development in our community, which is obviously really important. There are significant infrastructure challenges to be worked through as we complete this planning, and the Planning Commission is engaged in all of that, making progress. The fact is, more people will continue to move here for a variety of reasons, as climate change makes other parts of the state less livable, remote work becoming increasingly more viable, and this is just a wonderful place to live. And so there's no pulling up the ladder here, whether we plan or not, people are coming. And so it makes sense to get ahead of that, plan appropriately, and that's exactly what the Gateway Area Plan is. It's an opportunity to create environmentally responsible, walkable, bikeable, rollable, living near the downtown core, and also keep, as I said earlier, Arcata in control of the housing development. What the Gateway Area Plan isn't is a response to Cal Poly Humboldt. Arcata's decades-long reluctance to keep pace with our own housing needs has put the university in the position of addressing housing needs itself, and which it's clearly prepared to do. It's worth remembering briefly what a boon Cal Poly Humboldt is to our town and region, contributing nearly 5,000 jobs and $150 million annually in labor income. Given this, we have every reason to collaborate with Cal Poly Humboldt, welcome its students and staff, and work to make our marriage a successful one. The Planning Commission has also heard the City Council's goal for this work on strategic infill redevelopment to be completed by July, and we are committed to continuing working towards that goal. Other news, the Regional Climate Action Plan has been drafted, and the county is the lead, taking the lead as an agency on the environmental review for that plan. When it's complete, it will be part of the City of Arcata's plan to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. City is also part of the Sea Level Rise Working Group, which is obviously a related issue. Lastly, the Planning Commission very much, very much appreciates the City Council's support for our training in 2022. We had an opportunity to take trainings from the Institute for Local Government, specifically for Planning Commissioner trainings. We also got to attend training by the Association for Environmental Planners on CEQA. We learned more about our roles as commissioners. We were updated on new housing policies out of Sacramento, took part in discussions about CEQA, but probably most importantly, we had the opportunity to network with other Planning Commissioners and other planners. Very useful and productive, and this kind of training results in better and more informed recommendations to the City Council from the Planning Commission, and so we encourage the City Council to maintain a training budget for 2023. That's all I have, and I'll answer any questions.
Wonderful, thank you, Scott. Do we have any questions from the council?
Well, I just wanted to mention that tomorrow night, there's going to be, from 6:00 to 8:00, at the Planning Commission, you may want to follow up on that, but there's going to be a part of the Gateway Plan, why don't you talk about it? Because I've been asked a couple of times, and I've told people that I thought they should attend if they're interested, and I'm gonna let you address it.
I'll let David show.
David, address it.
Yeah.
Somebody, thank you.
Yeah, we have information out on our website, and through our social media, and also if you're signed up for e-notifications, you got a personal invite to attend a workshop we're having tomorrow night from 6:00 to 8:00, and what we'll be doing is one of the first real detailed design dives on the form-based code that will be applied to the Gateway Area Plan. So take a look on our Strategic Infill Redevelopment Program website, you'll see the links to those, and we'd encourage all folks in the audience and out there in the TV land to join us.
Thank you, David, because I've had inquiries about that, suggested they attend. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
David, will that be recorded?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Will that be recorded?
Oh, yeah, it will be recorded, and there, yes, it will be recorded.
I just want to thank you and the rest of the Planning Commissioners, I watch your meetings, I know that they tend to go sometimes as long as ours do, I know you have robust conversations and make really hard decisions. I know you have robust conversations and make really hard decisions, and I appreciate all you do. Thank you so much.
We appreciate the support. Thank you.
Okay, I know, I guess we watch, all of us watch so many Planning Commission meetings that we don't have too many questions for you, Scott. Okay, thank you. Karen, will you remind me, do we take public comment on these reports, or do we, now we just move to early oral? No? Okay. So the next item on our agenda is early oral communications. The City Council values your comments. This is our 15-minute time period to allow people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Supported requests that require council action will be set for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers may be limited to two minutes at this time, and there will also be time for public comments specifically on each agenda item, and again, at the end of our meeting under, under item number 12. So please make your way to the podium, especially if you have one of those cards for early oral communications, and line up behind the podium to make your public comment. We will take the first four comments in person, and then we will move to Zoom, and if there is more time in this 15-minute time period, we will go back to in-person comments if there's nobody on Zoom. All right, we've got some people here, and I will turn it over to the public.
Okay, my name is Jude Power. I live in Arcata, but I'm here tonight representing Redwood Region Audubon Society, specifically about the problem of free-roaming cats at the Arcata Marsh. As we all know, cats kill birds and other wildlife and spread disease. So I want to bring your attention to a law that is already in your municipal code and has been enforced in the past. It's under Title 10, Chapter 3, Regulations for Use of the Arcata Martian Wildlife Sanctuary, Section 10, 656, Release of Animals. And it says in brief, "The City Council finds that the presence of non-native animals in the Arcata Martian Wildlife Sanctuary disrupts the native ecology of that environment. It shall be unlawful to release or cause the release of any animal into the Arcata Martian Wildlife Sanctuary or into any area adjoining or in proximity to the Arcata Martian Wildlife Sanctuary." And lastly, it says, "The Director of Environmental Services, or his/her designee, is authorized to impound and remove all non-native animals found in the Arcata Martian Wildlife Sanctuary. The Director, or his/her designee, shall deliver the impounded animals to Sequoia Humane Society," which I think at this point would probably be changed to Humboldt County Animal Shelter in McKinleyville. So please, Redwood Region Audubon asks that you direct the Environmental Services Department to designate someone to remove free-roaming cats from Arcata Marsh. This used to happen. A city employee used to do this. We also suggest that you mail another round of ordinance notification letters to the residents of South G Street, just to let them know you intend to enforce it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council and city staff. I do see some familiar faces. My name is John Shelter. I am the owner and coordinator of the People of New Directions, a program that's dealt with the environmental stuff since I've left Arcata in 12, 2012. We are now up to 2 million pounds of trash that we've retrieved. We've relocated 13,000 syringes now, and by doing all this, we've actually been able to provide employment and training for 192 different individuals that have moved on. We are a social enterprise. We are not a nonprofit. We are a nonprofit that's self-supporting, that's a social enterprise, and we do the jobs, and there is nobody to match up. It's not a conflict of interest to call us and say, hey, can you do a presentation? It's not a conflict of interest. City law enforcement in Eureka uses our name quite a bit because there is nobody else that does anything like what we do. We have created a unique partnership with the Arcata House Partnership now, and have been working alongside them for almost about a year and a half now. We'd like to move forward and do even more. I'd like to do a presentation. I know you can't make that decision tonight, but I do have plans. We've talked with Arcata Partnership, and I'd like to bring employment readiness for the homeless population back to the City of Arcata. When I tried it before, we weren't quite understood, and we were far ahead of where we, anybody else was. Now the state of California is actually trying to copy that. We do things a little bit differently than everybody else, so I would like you guys to consider that, and maybe I can get a call from Karen or from one of you individuals. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, John.
Good evening. I'd like to address the Arcata Fire District presentation from the last Planning Commission meeting. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to watch that and absorb everything, so as you all know, it's, they are, their recommendation is 40 feet, three stories. The most pressing issue right now is Cal Poly is finalizing their EIR, so I hope that the city is responding to that, because basically, they're not even mentioning it's an issue, it's a problem. So the liability for the city, if they, if they, if they don't say something that, yeah, this is a problem, is going to be astronomical in the future if something goes wrong, you know, and Miami with the collapse of that building, it was a $1 billion settlement, you know, and they specifically wanted to go after individuals who they thought were responsible for that. So for the city not to respond at all to this finalized report would just be unbelievable. So I don't know, I was here two and a half months ago when I brought up the fact that there was a period, I think it was late October to beginning of December, as far as your response to that, and I didn't get the impression that you were responding at that time, but maybe, maybe you have. So it would be important to inform the public exactly what's going on from that standpoint, because right now, no one knows what's going to happen. You know, the university is just going ahead with this. I mean, can you imagine if this was a private developer trying to pull this? This is just a little crazy that someone's going about to put students at risk, putting first responders at risk, and basically all of the taxpayers here in Arcata, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maureen Cain here, and I'm going to read something that I wrote to put in the papers. But to preface it, who is responsible for emergency shelter in Arcata? Who? Aren't we all? And here's my letter to the editor. It is astonishing we have been able to live with ourselves and sometimes smile, dance, and sing. We have been very careless with the life that sustains us, careless. Caring and sharing is our true nature, and we would be ever so comfortable when we discard anything that doesn't jive with our true nature. Having been part of the unsheltered community for almost six years, I can tell you that we are heartbroken that our friends are dying of exposure and loneliness and carelessness. This war against the poor, which Charles Dickens spoke so eloquently about, has sickened our entire species now and most of the others. However, that was then, this is now, and now we are well on our way to coming to our senses. And I and dozens of others have just been housed and sheltered at The Grove, formerly Days Inn in Valley West, and we now have reality to sing, smile, and dance about. Love is alive. Thank you.
Thank you for your words, Maureen. Okay, we will check Zoom, and if there's not too many people, we'll head back to you, Fred.
We actually have seven hands up on Zoom.
Oh, boy, oh, boy. Okay, well, we will take then the first four hands on Zoom, and then, folks, we will have to move to the later part of the meeting.
So Zoom does order them. I'm just going to read them off so they know who they are. It'll be Call and User One, Jane Woodward, Shoshana, and Anthony. There are three other hands raised that we won't get to until the later communication. So we'll start with Call and User One. Go ahead.
Hello, this is Kent Swat. Thank you for my opportunity to speak. I wanted to reinforce what one of your speakers said a little while ago. What I deal with is risk management. I will be speaking on that continuously, kind of a hobby of mine, but I'm pretty good at it. To potentially build a structure that exceeded the ability of your first responders to respond to, be it you or Humboldt State, in my opinion, Humboldt State would be grossly negligent to do this without having the quick, the required responders. You just passed a rather large, within the last couple of years, you're a rather large, in fact, I think you have the highest, most expensive user fee per parcel in the county, as far as I can tell, for your fire district. I possess my company, my construction company possesses an A license, which means we can build these large tall structures, not particularly in that business. We can build bridges and those kind of things, but the feasibility of those particular structures and the cost of those structures are something you should weigh as far as something that you would permit in your districts. You should take into effect the lack of, I believe, 23 additional positions were required by your fire department, and that was quite a bit of money. So I would ask you to be practical when you do your risk management. Please don't endanger the public health, safety, and welfare until you have the infrastructure, being the first responders and other things needed to, to service these particular projects. So we'll talk a little bit about some other risk things a little bit later. Have some things that we'll talk about, maybe my, my last three minutes or something. I don't, can't see the clock here, so I don't know if I have any time left, but I have some concerns regarding some permits that were issued. Hold, Harmless, and Deminification clauses are there. That's very important for risk management. They were required to be signed. They were not signed, and that was for the kinetic sculpture race last year. Highly recommend that this year you get your papers signed.
Thank you, Kent.
Otherwise, these things are not enforceable. Thank you for my time to speak.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next caller on Zoom, please.
Jane, go ahead, Jane.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, we got you, Jane.
Okay, good. Welcome. I know I sent you my comments earlier, but to get some of it into the public record, I will go ahead and mention that, as you are aware, Eric Ladenschager from the Arcata Fire District presented a very extensive presentation about the problems associated with providing, with the Arcata Fire District providing effective response to anything over 40 feet, and pointed out that the sorrel building is over that, and that it will cost an estimated $5 million per year additional in order to have the staffing and the capability to respond to buildings in excess of that height. So this is a problem not only with Cal Poly, but what's proposed in the Gateway Plan, and the issue of the liability of the city and of the entire district, actually, because they all have to be assessed to provide this service, is a huge problem and needs to be evaluated as part of a risk assessment. Apparently, the Cal Poly, Cal Poly has its EIR going before the Board of Trustees on January 24th for approval. I don't know if the city has taken a position, but if not, it should, and otherwise, we could have huge problems. So let's see. I don't know whether you need to have a special meeting about this. If so, you should do so soon, but until then, the Fire District recommends that no buildings over 40 feet be built. I'd also recommend that you set up a joint meeting with Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Let's see what arrives. Thank you.
Again, thank you for sending your letter along as well. Okay. Our next speaker, Shoshana, go ahead, Shoshana.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment because we're coming upon the anniversary of the death of Jen Mariposa Garcia this month and a couple of days, who got hit in a crosswalk over on St. Louis near L.K. Wood, and I know that the event that happened yesterday over at Foster and Alliance was a complete out-of-the-blue tragedy that couldn't have been predicted in any way or prevented in what happened, but before the details unfolded, I, and I'm sure a lot of other people, were so worried that it was another case of a distracted or impaired person driving and hitting someone in a crosswalk on a really long stretch of road that people often speed through at ridiculous rates, and there's so many kids. My two kids go through there, so many do, so many college students, so many high schoolers and kids going to Fontana Web and Coastal Grove, and just a lot of kids on Alliance, and there are four, but there are just so many spots where I really wish and hope for more to protect people from drivers, and there, I love it that there are, some of the paint has been refreshed in some of the crosswalks, which is great, and that there's that Caltrans sign asking people to slow down, but hoping for more soon. I really, really, really hope for bright, lighty crosswalks that can be activated so that people notice and pay attention better at the four places on Alliance, which are 17th over at Arcata High School, M, and the bike path, also over by Stewart Court on Westwood, by Westwood Market, as well as that spot on St. Louis Boulevard and another spot over on L.K. Wood, and of course, on H Street, where people cross a lot and cars so rarely stop unless you really are putting on a spectacular production to get across the street safely. There's just so many crosswalks that are in between intersections that people feel really unsafe crossing all the time, but thank you so much for anything that can be done, and please, everybody, stop driving so fast on these roads. We can all do a thing to help make that safer. Thank you.
All right, yep, thank you, Shoshana. You have a round of applause in here for you as well. Okay, so we will have time to take one more speaker during our 15-minute early oral communications. I believe it's, I wrote down Anthony online, and so we will have one more comment online, and then those other folks waiting, you will have to wait till our end oral communications to comment on item 12. Okay.
Hi, everybody. Thank you very much. Anthony DeLuca here. I just wanted to say that I think a lot of the public is curious about the city's response to the Arcata Fire Protection District. I wanted to alert the council that procedure outlined by the Planning Commission for allowing commercial building was not followed by the Dutch Bros, and I believe it's your responsibility to address that. It's also the City Council's responsibility to address any malfeasance or neglect of duty conducted by the city staff and the city manager, and especially continuing to represent the Gateway Area Plan draft as it is, is definitely considered that. And then also, Cal Poly buying the building that was supposed to be a senior resource center violates the California Density Population Bonus Law. So you guys are doing a lot of stuff wrong by continuing forward without addressing these problems, and it will be your responsibility down the line. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so that brings us to the end of early oral communications. So thank you. The next item on our calendar, on our agenda, is the Consent Calendar, item number eight. All matters on the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine by the City Council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is required, that item can be removed from the Consent Calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the Consent Calendar, council members and members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. So item A is to approve the minutes of the City Council meeting of January 4th, 2023. B is the biweekly report on disbursements. C, declare a continuation of the local emergency related to the coronavirus pandemic. D, adopt Resolution Number 223-29, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata, ratifying the Arcata Fire Protection District's ordinance, number 22-21, adopting the 2022 California Fire Code Title 24, Part 9, based on the 2021 International Fire Code. Item E is to adopt the California Environmental Quality Act CEQA categorical exemption for the Inflow and Infiltration Reduction Project and approve the project. Item F is to adopt Resolution Number 223-30, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata, adopting the Section 3 Plan for the HUD-funded Housing Rehabilitation, Housing Construction, and Public Construction rehabilitation, housing construction, and public construction projects. Item G, adopt resolution number 223-32, accepting a Title II grant from the U.S. Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention for the Arcata Juvenile Diversion Program to support housing, or support hosting the Parent Project program in partnership with the Humboldt Teen Court. And item H is to ratify an employment agreement with Tabitha Miller for Finance Director. Do we have any council members that would like to remove an item from the Consent Calendar?
Item A, please.
A or H, sorry, I didn't hear.
A.
Um, G, as in Gary?
Okay, we have A and G. Any other council members or staff that would like to pull an item?
Well, then I would move for adoption of the consent.
We do have one hand raised that I believe might want to pull an item.
Yeah, and so if there are any members of the public that would like to pull an item, please either tell us or raise your hand on Zoom.
Hello, Kent Swatki. I'd like to pull item H for discussion, please.
So we have pulled items A, G, and H. So do we have a motion for items B through F?
I would so move.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Stillman and a second by Vice Mayor Matthews. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. All right, so I will now defer to Councilmember Atkins Alizar on item A.
It's just a minor, easy-to-make mistake, but on packet page 16 of the minutes of our January 4th meeting, it just said that Mayor Atkins Alizar invited public comment, but I'm not the mayor anymore, so wasn't me.
It was me. Okay, thank you. Bridget, easy fix. Okay, so do we have a motion to approve, or do we have any public comments on item A, on the minutes?
So I would move to adopt on the Consent Calendar, item A, with the correction.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so that now takes us to item G.
Yeah, I just wanted to pull it to make, to commend the wonderful job that Leah, Crystal do in the juvenile diversion program, the Parent Project, and I'm super stoked that it's also bilingual for those Spanish-speaking families, and they do an incredible job. So thank you.
Yeah, a wonderful program, and so, yeah, thank you again. See, you don't have to answer any questions, chief. No, you just get some praise here. All right, so do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on item G, which is our accepting the grant for the juvenile diversion program? Nope, okay.
Seeing none, I would move for, on the Consent Calendar, to adopt item G.
We have a motion to adopt item G?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries unanimously. And then we had a member of the public who wished to pull item H, which is to ratify the employee agreement with Tabitha Miller for Finance Director. So let's defer to our Zoom commenter, I believe it was Kent Swatki, to discuss that item.
Thank you for deferring to me. This is quite a coup. Tabitha Miller was brought into Humboldt County, I think from Fort Bragg. She was poached from there, and she was, in my opinion, in the whatever, 15 years or whatever I've been involved with the county, by far and away, the most qualified person to do the job that she was brought to do. She was responsible for instantly alleviating a lot of the problems that were allegedly caused by our prior auditor controller, and was working extremely long hours, and everybody testified that. Was easy to get along with people. I never heard anybody say anything negligent about her in any way, shape, or form, only complimentary. And that's unusual, because if somebody has a complaint about someone, they usually come to me because I listen and then try to have those things followed to it. So congratulations, and that's one of the reasons why I was commending your staff on the ability to end up with Tabitha. Hope she's with you for a long time. I hope she has, enjoys the working relationship, working with Arcata staff, rather than what I consider to be a pressure mill by working in the CAO's office in Humboldt County. So I just wanted to congratulate both you and Tabitha. I think you'll be a great, a great fit for each other, and hopefully it'll be long-term.
Okay, thank you. Yes, we are looking forward to welcoming our new Finance Director.
So with that, I would like to move for adoption of Consent Calendar, item H.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And with that, we're on to old business. So our first item underneath old business this evening is to introduce ordinance number 1559, amending the short-stay vacation rental program. And may we have a staff report from Community Development Director David Loyah, please.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and council members. Before you tonight is ordinance 1559, which will amend the short-stay vacation rental program. And staff's recommending that you take the staff report and open it for public comment, and then introduce the ordinance, reading the recommendation as your motion, which would allow you to waive reading the text and consent to read by title only, an important piece. This ordinance comes to you, which is attached in Attachment A, as a direct result of your October 19th meeting, where you provided explicit direction to staff on what changes to make. At that time, we gave a pretty detailed description of the kinds of things that we heard in the various stakeholder meetings, on the concepts that had come out of community concerns, as well as some concerns that the council raised themselves. And so I won't go into detail about those, but I will point out a couple of highlights. It creates a new exception from the rules for hotels, motels, and beds and breakfasts, which are separately defined and treated differently in the Land Use Code, so they're not even subject to the ordinance after the adoption. And it also creates a new exemption from the cap. As you recall, the city council put a limitation on the total number of permits at 100 for short-stay vacation rentals, but then create an exemption for owner occupancy, and then one also for long-term tenancy. You created a new exemption for historic landmark properties with this ordinance, if adopted. And then you removed the exemption for long-term tenancy. I want to focus just a little bit on the effect of the removal of the long-term tenancy exemption, just so you have an understanding of the impact. And I've filled in many calls from public members as to, you know, what this might mean to them. Currently, as of my count today, you have a total of 93 exempt permits. Of those, 48 are owner occupancy exemptions, and 45 are long-term tenancy exemptions. And then you have 78 non-exempt permits. And so after the second reading of this ordinance and its adoption, there'll be a 30-day period after which it'll become effective. And on that effective date, you'll have the 48 owner occupancy as the exemptions. There may be some other permits that come in between now and then that would fall into that exemption, but given what we know today, 48. And the 45 long-term tenancy would be added to the non-exempt projects. And that would bring our total number of non-exempt permits to 123. 123 is above the cap. This has concerned many people who have long-term tenancy situations that are worried that they wouldn't be able to continue to use their property after they've invested the money that it's taken to, you know, stand it up as a long-term, or short-stay rental, rather. And so it is the recommendation of staff that the city council honor those long-term tenancy former exemptions and continue to renew those as, you know, an annual basis so long as they are compliant with the remainder of the conditions of the ordinance. And then we would reduce down to the cap of 100 over time as those permits cease to operate. So that, I know that was a concern of many people who are currently operating under the exemption. The last item I have for you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, and then encourage you to open it to public comment, is that the ordinance is written in underlined, strikeout. The double underline are additions, and the strikeouts are the items that we recommend striking. And again, this is all, for the most part, related to your October 19th meeting. There was one item on packet page 119 where we had an inspection clause, where the building official was allowed to inspect based on, you know, known health and safety violations. This is actually covered somewhere else in the municipal code, so in order to reduce that duplication, we struck that paragraph as well. That's all I have for you tonight.
All right, thank you, David. We will open it up to questions from the council, and I know we might have a few, because we do have a new council member that was not at that October 19th meeting. So I will open it up to you folks.
Yeah, as I remember, we had a very robust conversation about that several months ago, but thank you for clarifying that the existing non-conforming permits will be able to continue. I think that was important. So from what I understand, all the permits were at 123. Every, that, they're fine, and then as they drop off, no more. And the cap is 100? Yes. Great, thank you.
So I have a question. 45 long-term, what is that exact, I must, I know I was in October meeting, but I just don't understand. That would be like I have a vacation rental and I rent it out for a year.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. Just to clarify, if you had two units on a property, two or more units, and at least one of those units was rented to a long-term tenant, under the current ordinance, that is an exempt permit from the cap. What the direction from council in October was, was to eliminate that exemption so that if you have a mix of long-term tenants and short-stay rentals on your property, that would now fall under the cap. You would be subject to the cap of 100.
Let me see if I actually understand that. So let's say I have three units in my house. No, not my house, because I'm okay if I have it in my house, and a piece of property. But one of them I rent out, just like it's a regular apartment. So I rent it out for 12 months or 24, whatever my lease or rental agreement agrees. And then I have two other units, one is a short stay, and one maybe I rent out for 30 days off and on. So what does this mean?
So current, under the current ordinance, that type of situation would be exempt from the cap. Under the new provisions in the ordinance that you're considering tonight, that would now be subject to the cap. And so combining the existing non-exempt permits with the existing long-term tenancy permits will end up with 123 permits that are not exempt, meaning that we're above the cap. And we would have to wait until we whittle down to 100 to be at that cap.
I guess I don't know why I can't understand this. So that means I have one long-term that I rent out all the time. So I have three vacation rentals. One I rent out all the time, one I rent out maybe, don't pay bed tax, because I rent it out for 31, 32 days or something. And then I have one that is a short-term turnover every few days. So they're all treated the same as a vacation.
The one short-term rental would be counted.
But not the other two?
Correct.
Thank you. Now I understand. I don't know why.
And in the current ordinance, all of them required permits. It's just what reached, what got us to the 100 cap. And certain types of short-stay rentals, owner occupy and long-term tenancy, were exempt from that number, but still everybody was required to get a permit.
Any other questions before we open it up to public comment?
I just wanted to clarify. I, it was my assumption that the, those folks that would push it over the cap were automatically grandfathered in. Is that the case, or do we need to clarify that?
Yeah, we're recommending that the existing long-term tenants continue to retain the ability to keep their permits and also renew their permits as long as they stay compliant with the remainder of the ordinance. As they give those permits up, that will bring us back down to that 100.
I guess my question was just, do we need to clarify the motion, or is that already covered?
I don't believe you need to.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Questions? Other questions before we open it up? Okay, let's open it up for public comment on the short-stay vacation rental. If you're interested in commenting on this item, please head to the podium for your three minutes to speak on this item. This is the public comment for this item. We won't call it again. Nobody? Really? Gosh. All right, we'll move to online.
All right, our first one is call and user six. Your hand has been up since early oral communication, but this is communications on amending the short-stay vacation rental. Did you have public comment on short-stay vacation rental? Call and user. Can you unmute? All right, we will try call and user one. Comments on short-stay rental. Go ahead.
Well, this is Kent Swatki. Just a little bit of quick history on this. Back when I was about 15 years old, and I'm 68 now, I traveled Europe with my parents, and we stayed at what was called a Zimmer free. And it was the equivalent of this back then. It was all owner occupied, and you would stay in their home, you'd have meals. And it was the most wonderful relationship we could have as far as renting a place instead of staying in a motel. My parents continue to have these same people back and forth to visit us here, and they go back and forth. So I strongly support the model, especially of the owner occupied, Zimmer free, or whatever you wish to call them. That seemed to work very well. I think you may actually consider raising your cap eventually to allow more of these. Now, there's a big fear that we're losing, we're losing housing. And I would like the city maybe to analyze how many existing motel rooms are being converted into affordable housing. And I'm guessing, from what I've seen around, we had one speaker earlier who was staying in one, but I'm guessing you're coming out close to the same amount of people. And the experience they get by staying with a family or staying in a small dwelling or something is what makes tourism happen here and happen comfortably. And the whole thing, I strongly recommend, not that we want somebody to take over all these things with Airbnbs, but if it's handled correctly, I think it's the future of not only affordable, but the quality of experience you want people to have in Arcata. So thank you for my opportunity to speak on this. I strongly support you not, you know, grandfather these people in, but I would consider raising that cap and have your people keep track of how many additional motels that used to house tourists are being converted into affordable housing. Thanks for my opportunity to speak.
All right, can I go?
You can, Anthony. Go ahead.
Thank you. This one is kind of personal to me, but I know extremely relevant to Arcata, is that I would like for you guys to consider including rentals to out-of-town nurses and people working in the medical field, and your, your limitations that you're going to put on, you know, whatever kind of vacation rentals people are doing. I think you should include rentals to out-of-county professionals so that the medical system here can attract better professionals with better rates and better pay. People who are going to come here and live in this community, and the money that they make will remain in this community. It's really important, because our medical system is suffering. There's barely enough people to help the amount of people that are sick now, and you guys want to invite, you know, thousands more here, and Cal Poly wants to invite thousands more here. So I think it's really important that we consider ways to attract good medical professionals. And then also, in doing so, you'll probably help the rental market here in the sense that a lot of landlords are really raising their prices, thinking that if they put furniture on there and they advertise out of the area professionals, that they can add another $1,000 a month to their rental. So the situation is compounding and getting worse, and I think that limiting the amount of, of temporary rentals that are allowed is going to help that situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
No more online comment.
Okay, so at this point, we are going to close public comment on this item. Ordinance number 1559, amending the short-stay vacation rental program. All right, I will entertain more and more questions or comments from the council, or we can have a motion and a second.
Well, I was just thinking about the last speaker, and what they're actually addressing is that they're addressing a rental that can be rented for two and a half months or something. So you can, and I don't think it would fall under this at all, even though there is a concern. I know there's a concern about housing for medical staff and others, and that that has been going on, and there are many people that do participate in that, but they probably aren't considered themselves as short-stay rentals. In fact, I imagine quite a few people in our town are not doing short-stay rentals. They are doing short-stay rentals, but they are not participating in the program.
We're going to find you.
It's not me.
Well, on that ominous note, I would like to introduce ordinance number 1559, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Arcata, amending Article III in Chapter Two, Title VI of the Arcata Municipal Code to regulate short-stay and vacation rentals, waive reading the text, and consent to read by title only.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the table. However, I think Councilmember White does have a couple of questions, so we'll go to those before we vote.
Actually, I just wanted to answer a question for Ken. He asked how many motel rooms have been converted? He asked how many motel rooms have been converted? And I just wanted to say, I believe for the two Home Key projects out in Valley West, about one hundred and thirty-five. That was it.
Thank you for that info, Kimberly. Okay. We have a motion and a second on the table, and we shall take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes unanimously. We will now move to Item B under Old Business, which is to receive an update and provide direction on potential off-leash dog park sites. So as we're shuffling over here, we were going to have a staff report from Environmental Services Director Emily Sinkorn, once she gets seated and ready to go.
Great. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. Thanks for, oh, and I'm just going to delay a second. We have some visuals for this item, so it'll be helpful to pull up the screen. Great, so we have fun visuals filled with dogs that are having fun frolicking, and hopefully with their human friends as well. So this presentation is just an update on off-leash dog park planning. And our suggestion is to receive a brief staff report, take public comment, and then provide direction as needed. So as you know, there's a lot of community interest in having a specific space for off-leash dogs and their owners to co-mingle, have fun, be at a place without restraint. And this has really had a lot of community support, both in Arcata and also recognizing that there are dog, off-leash dog park sites in Fortuna, McKinleville and Eureka. And really seeing an opportunity for existing Arcata residents, future residents, and also visitors coming to Humble County and coming to Arcata. Really, off-leash dog parks could provide an opportunity for owners that don't have a yard to have a place for their dog to play, also alleviate pressure on our existing nearly fifty miles of, of trails within the community forest and our Bay Trail and the marsh, where dogs are, are welcome, but on leash, both for them and other dogs, and the humans walk, walking the trail. So Environmental Services provided an update to your council in August of two thousand and twenty-one. We have new council members, as well as we've had a lot of park priorities, which we'll touch on. So this will be an update and to seek additional guidance in particular ahead of next fiscal year's goal-setting and budget planning. So just for some history, we have many dozens of miles for four-legged friends and their humans to enjoy, as well as a lot of community parks where humans go with their dogs as well. In two thousand and ten, the Arcata Parks and Recreation Master Plan really outlined that a dog park is a facility need for many different user groups. And so from then, and especially in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, the Arcata Dog Park Working Group really demonstrated a lot of community interest and need in developing a dog park. In two thousand and fifteen, kind of through two thousand and seventeen, what was Public Works and now Environmental Services staff had really been looking into options. And one of those options being the Little Lakes property on South I Street, north of the marsh. But really looking at pros and cons, and also outlining in particular what are some key criteria that we should look at for what would make a successful dog park. So some of those criteria are really making sure that the sighting of a dog park kind of fits with the adjoining neighborhood. Noise or parking impacts could be some of those neighborhood concerns. And also just opportunities for integrating a new public space with existing public space, you know, perhaps around that new facility. We talk, have talked about size in past presentations and in, in research with the Arcata Dog Park Working Group. And they're, they've really outlined what would be an ideal visitor-serving facility that could have big dogs and little dogs in separate spaces. And we've also talked about for a neighborhood size or an interim location, that a smaller size, about an acre or less, could also potentially fit. Dog parks come in very many different sizes, from, you know, five hundred square feet to, you know, ten acres. So there's a big, a big range in those type of facilities. Having fencing, whether that is existing already for a site or that could be developed is key for, for safety for dogs and adjoining land uses. Also really having clear sightlines across the site to know what is going, you know, going on. You can see dogs interacting. Really having some suggestions have been for it to be a, a clear place for visitors to get to, clear directional signage, and having parking nearby. And so this is a, a space with probably some surfacing improvements, fencing, and maybe some other key park amenities, having ADA parking, water-accessible benches. Those are just, have been some key criteria we've been thinking about in our planning and that members of the public have voiced as well. So this is a map showing what were potential dogs park sites proposed for consideration for both an interim use or a future really augmented use. And so in August of twenty-one, the council gave direction to focus on three locations in particular. And those were the Little Lakes property on South I, the southern section of the D Street Linear Park, as well as Stewart Park. So I'm just going to talk about those couple of locations, touch on a couple of other sites that have come from, being voiced from councilmembers and one of our city committees, and happy to talk about any of the other locations as well. So the Little Lakes property is, again, on South I Street. It is north of the marsh, and it is accessible from downtown, accessible from one oh one. It is currently, you know, a larger open space that could, you know, seem as opportunities for flexibility for, you know, designing future park amenities. It is a former redevelopment agency property. And, you know, our community development department is really ushering forward that dissolution of the redevelopment agency and how to then best plan for those properties. So that will be even future conversations and council direction for that. But in particular, some of the constraints have also been from having known contamination on a section of the property, and from the former mill site that was located there. And community development has received a cleanup grant from the EPA to move forward on that work now that it has been characterized and hope to get started on that cleanup work this year. Also, just for other things occurring on the site and constraints for planning for any public access on that site now, is that, as you know, we had our groundbreaking ceremony for the wastewater treatment plant project. And one of the staging areas for the construction of that project, especially for support when the work is happening in the enhancement marshes, part of the treatment plant, is a corner, a section of the Little Lakes property. And so that is now being actively used for construction staging and will be for the duration of the project, of the wastewater treatment plant project. So that is another thirty-two, you know, thirty-six months. So just thinking for constraints that are on that property, but that still could be, you know, a future, a future location. In two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, the Arcata Dog Park Working Group had put together some concepts of what a larger dog, dog park could look like there. And then in two thousand and eighteen, Environmental Services, you know, working with others, city staff, had really thought about, you know, as this former redevelopment agency property, conceptual ideas for that have included a component of public access on the site. And a, a, a dog park could potentially fit for, you know, a smaller section of that site. So there had been some concepts developed in, in two thousand and eighteen. And then, you know, more of those constraints and opportunities for this site have arisen. And so we, this hasn't further advanced from the, you know, potential, potential option. So went into more in-depth there. This is just a, a photo of the D Street Linear Park, south of Eleventh Street. And it, it is partially fenced along the Caltrans right-of-way. It is about two-thirds of an acre. And it is a kind of a longer orientation, perhaps, for a longer dog run. The street parking, it, street parking would be the only parking nearby. In two thousand and seventeen, Environmental Services connected outreach with nearby neighbors and invited attendance at a Parks and Recreation Committee. There was less enthusiasm for this location as a dog park at that time. I think that, and again, there really, there has not been a lot of neighborhood outreach since, since that time, and really could be re-looked at and neighbors re-engage, particularly, you know, if a focus is on a smaller, more neighborhood-oriented dog park. Another, the other location that in two thousand and twenty-one, council provided direction to further research is Stewart Park. Some fencing already exists on the east and south sections. A, a lot of multiple park users use this. It's located near Arcata High. There's a great playground. There's a, a lot of use. It's about a half-acre site that could be considered. And again, this has really been in concept, and no outreach has been conducted to adjoining neighbors in the neighborhood. So those are the three sites that the council previous provided guidance on. And I did want to touch on a couple, two other locations that have, have come up in more city committee conversations. This is not a great picture, but tried to capture. Just south of City Hall on Seventh is a former right-of-way of Caltrans that the, that the city now manages. And it is enclosed, you know, by, by fencing. But the only public access to that section is really from the Seventh Street sidewalk. Parking is very limited. Yes, it's right next door to the parking lot for where Safeway and the Arcata Shopping Center, Union Town Shopping Center is. But that is not a, a public access, city-owned parking or access facility. The property is also, has just some limitations with site distance and ADA access, as it is slanted. And some people voiced concern of having dogs being right next to a heavily-traveled sidewalk just for feeling, uh, feeling of safety. But that is one site that seems like, oh, this may be an underutilized piece of, you know, public property near the downtown. Just throwing it out as another location that came up in the Parks and Rec Committee recently, was the southern corner of Larson Park by, right by the Bachi Courts. The Larson Park will be further connected to the Arcata Skate Park and having a new, or an additional entrance as the city continues to pursue the construction of the Arcata Annie and Mary Trail. Larson Park does have parking and other, you know, users coming and using the park quite often. This little area is about a third of an acre. It is a place where people run their dogs. You know, although we're supposed to have dogs on leashes in all of our public parks. This is one that came up at the committee, so just wanted to share with, with the council. So just again, for, for what this would cost, we've really seen, like, at a minimum, probably twenty-five thousand for developing a existing city park site with surfacing park amenities and if minimal fencing is needed. And for future planning of a larger park, that could be up to a hundred thousand per acre. But I've touched on those key criteria, so ADA parking, fencing, park amenities are, just are the things that we would want to ensure are nearby. You know, as with developing any new facility, there would be additional ongoing maintenance needs that would, you know, become part of the, you know, responsibilities of our, of our Parks Division. And I think there, we've had great collaborations with other user groups for maintenance on our trails and in our community forests that could be for, further pursued to assist city staff in really stewarding a new, a new facility. So th, those are some summaries, and, and if you were listening to a similar presentation in August of twenty-one, you'd be like, oh, that'll be something pretty similar. And so I do want to say that the council has outlined from community interest and need, a lot of park priorities for, you know, last fiscal year and then in this fiscal year. And so the, our department has really been focusing on bringing a lot of those park projects to fruition. And so I would suggest of, you know, considering the, this, you know, a potential dog park, further research and planning and outreach with neighbors to consider for next fiscal year goal-setting and budget planning. But did want, a, and, and part of that is really because we have a lot of exciting park projects that are being constructed and about to be constructed. So in this current fiscal year, our priorities have been to complete the Shea Park Phase Two. And we had a ribbon cutting just a couple of months ago. And now our new, there's a new bike share located right at the park as well. So that's another recent addition that has come in. We are aiming for construction of three larger park projects next summer. And so that is a big lift among many, you know, projects that we have going on in the city. But these are really reflective of the council's priorities. So the Carlson Park in Valley West has been a priority for development for many years. And we have two grant funding sources, and we're in the final design phase. And Redwood Park has been, again, also a council and community priority. And so that, for Redwood Park, the key improvements will be the new playground, as well as a bicycle pump track and ADA parking improvements, as well as our neighborhood park, Bloomfield Park. We've received really incredible feedback from neighbors and people that use the park and our Parks and Rec Committee, and we have new equipment. Equipment was taken out during COVID because it, it had been there for many decades. And so we've received helpful input for new equipment. So those are our three big park construction projects planned for next summer. Also, in December, we, your, the council approved our project for the Arcata Annie and Mary Trail and the, the SEQA document. And so these are kind of our, our key implementation priorities and really suggest kind of for next steps. I'm happy to answer any questions just on the planning and research that has occurred so far, any of the potential locations mentioned or, or not mentioned. And then to take comments from the, the public and consider any direction to Environmental Services either now or at budget planning for next fiscal year. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Emily. Okay, so do we have any questions or comments from the council to start us off?
I do. Thank you for the presentation. And I know that this has been a long time coming for the public, and we're still not quite there yet, but we're getting closer, so I think that's good. In the, the map of the two thousand and eighteen plan, where it showed like potential fences and all that, it, I think it was about one point one acres. And then I think maybe earlier in the presentation, you mentioned three acres. I don't, or that was on a slide, I'm not sure. And then I know that there's people that even want a bigger, like seven acres. So I was kind of thinking somewhere in the middle, like, three would, would be appropriate if we could find a space. Is that what you were thinking? I'm just kind of wondering of the difference of the numbers.
Yeah, no, thank you for that question. The, the minimum of three acres is really suggested by the Arcata Dog Park Working Group with their research from what other communities have had and what has been successful, especially as a destination park for visitors and others in the region, just to have that separation of sizes of dogs and opportunities for different types of play. I think a size of three acres may be difficult to find within the city that, that, so that, I think that is what is challenging. I think your council and with, being, you know, with community development will have further discussions on- will have further discussions on planning for the Little Lakes property as there are, you know, many goals and, um, priorities for a former redevelopment agency property. And especially since those concepts so far have included some, um, component of public access. I would keep, keep that in mind for those further discussions, um, on, for that property. Um, the knowing of, of what the previous councils, um, have, have talked about for the concept for that Little Lakes property, um, the, and I can go back to that slide. The Environmental Services in the past had looked at what, um, how could we, you know, fit, maybe it's a first phase, or maybe it really is all that is able to be prioritized within Little Lakes, um, and trying to look at getting to at least an, an acre for, um, for that size of a dog park. So that was a long-winded answer to, I think there's, there will still be more conversations, um, to come.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. And my, um, my personal favorite is the Little Lakes site. I think that that just makes the most sense, especially for people to, it's, will be easy to access, also for travelers. Um, it's not, you know, I think it's pretty separate from, from neighborhoods. There's not, you know, not as much housing around, um, lots of more opportunity for parking. So for me, that's just the one that I lean towards wanting, wanting to support.
Um, I wanted to ask, cause this kind of goes off, cause, um, Stacy asked one of my questions, which was about, you know, how much of the Little Lakes property would a dog park utilize? Um, but then also thinking, you know, what, what is a realistic timeline for use of that property? Because kind of where my, and, and just to make my comment before I guess you answer, but, um, you know, my mind kind of goes to the idea that this is further down the line and that if we want to do something sooner, um, you know, this idea of these little pocket parks, even, you know, multiple, um, beyond, you know, what was suggested and looking into Valley West and, and other areas of the, you know, kind of city to have smaller dog parks for neighborhood use as well. But, um, yeah, I mean, what is a realistic timeline for the use of Little Lakes?
I think at a minimum, it would be looking at tw- um, 2026 with the, because we, i- in, in planning for the city's largest capital improvement project ever, the wastewater treatment plant, we were limited at, or needing to find accessible locations, um, for project staging for construction. Um, and one of those, you know, key locations is at Little Lakes. Um, and so that is one, that's one constraint. And, um, also, there is, uh, the, the cleanup efforts will be starting, will be starting soon. And so hopefully can also be within that, um, that timeline. Um, and then probably really future planning for the Little Lakes property itself. But just thinking of what, you know, is really within Environmental Services purview and knowing that our, that's a really key construction, um, staging area to ensure we are able to upgrade our treatment plant.
Thank you. Um, and then just to, yeah, add my, my two cents on the whole deal. But I, I mean, I definitely think that Little Lakes is o- the obvious, you know, pro- property for this idea of this premier dog park that is, you know, at least an acre, if not more, to have the, the different sections for small and large dogs, to add these park amenities. Um, but it is a bit further down the line. And, um, I, I don't know why, yeah, it didn't come up before. And I think, um, you know, the committee mentioning Larson Park, I think is a really great idea that is, you know, are already, I have a, a friend that lives right, you know, neighbored up to that property, and you always see people taking their, their dogs out there already. And the, the line with the Bocchi Ball Court kind of already creates like a natural dog run area. And I, I do think that's a really great location in the sense that there is parking and there's also pretty close, uh, trail connectivity. And eventually there will be full trail connectivity once Annie and Mary, um, goes kind of through that region as well. And so, um, you know, I, I would be, if it is the, the will of the others up here, but I, I would be supportive of wanting to see some movement forward or at least engagement on, on that area to, to make, you know, a possibility of having something in the interim while, uh, we work to build this bigger, more exciting, um, destination dog park. So I think Larson Park would be a really suitable location. And it seems, you know, part of it is already fenced as well and could, you know, really be great.
Yeah, I had written down Larson Park as well as something that I think would be a good interim project. I agree with everything that Mayor Schaefer said.
Okay, well then, I haven't, I, you know, I don't have a dog. I haven't had one since nineteen sixty-six. So, um, but over here, I keep thinking about the one by Safeway. And we have two fences. I don't know how you access them. You must have an easement, but there's a double fence, uh, gates that go in there, and there's a single gate that goes in there off of the parking lot into that space. And I've talked to some people about a dog park there, and they said it wouldn't talk, take long at all before it was completely worn down from the dogs running in it. And that they, it doesn't have any water, but they said, you know, they're, now with their dogs, they're bring water to them anyway. They always have their bowls and they give them water. And so we wanted something in an interim until we could get, you know, the primo or whatever term we want to use for it. We might be able to do something as an interim across the street. Now, there may be some fence repairs, but it's a long run. It's not, you know, I happened to be in New Orleans with a friend of mine, and she would go to a place that was very similar to that every day. And her friends came, there are all these people that came, became friends because they all had dogs. And they had one bench, and they would have to open and close the gate, and they would have their dogs in there for so long, and then we would leave. And it was, um, this, this reminds me so much of that, of what they were doing in New Orleans for a dog park. And that's why I keep thinking that could work as an interim. But that's, you know, you're talking to a dogless person. And I've talked to people with dogs, and they feel like it, it would, it could work really well as an interim. So that's my thought. It's contrary to all of yours, but...
No, well, I, um, I just, I think if we're talking about interim parks, um, I guess I'm kind of gravitating towards the Larson Park idea just because, um, of, it seems to have everything, like, including parking. And it is flat, and, um, it just seems like it's already almost ready to go. So I would, I would support moving forward with that.
Feel like I need some of those numbers that Bridget has over there. Um, I was wanting to, my vision would be, which is what Sarah talked about, was the pocket parks or neighborhood parks. I had a question. I noticed, um, we talked about Carlson Park, but there was a, um, a mention of Valley West Park on Howland Drive in the back part there. Um, and with regards to, you know, 2026 is going to be far down the road, the interim parks, um, sound like the way to do that. Um, and I do concur that if we're not going to be looking at, of course, my favorite would be in Valley West, cause that's where I live. But I, I do also like the Larson car, uh, park idea. Um, my concern would be is that we don't want to become complacent when we get a park and that we don't actually move forward on the Little Lakes, uh, property. So that's what I have to say about that.
And so, just to follow up, I mean, I can see Larson Park working. You're, you know, you could run your dog and then you could go play tennis, or you could, you know, you have other activities there. But I also think, um, as far as Little Lake properties, we're going to really have to think about whether it's the best use for it. And it may not be a dog park. And it, but it may be a dog park, but I think that evaluation will come along later on. And so we shouldn't put all our apples in one basket. And I think having a multiple of little dog parks here and there, or maybe that's not the term, medium or big, large, whatever, dog parks, there are a lot of maintenance. So we should really focus on one because we're going to have to make sure we put the rest of the infrastructure in to make it work. And, uh, cause it's going to require the bags, the water, you know, there's quite a bit of infrastructure. So we have to think about that.
So I hear that. I guess what, one of the issues, like, if you're out in Valley West, you have to walk 3.5 miles to get to a park. So that is kind of prohibited for folks that live over in North Arcata or Valley West. So, um, I think that if we could somehow find a way to do pocket parks or smaller renditions of neighborhood parks, that would be more equitable for everyone.
Well, I, I have a family that has two dogs, and right now they take them to, out to Hillary Park a lot. And I'm sure people in your area probably do the same. I think probably everyone that has dogs, that's one of the places they go, or they go...
Not everybody has a vehicle, though. That, that's the problem, um, I think for a lot of folks out in Valley West is that you can't put them on the bus. So you're...
You can't take your dogs on the bus?
Um, not unless they're like certified, but, I mean, it could get kind of crazy if that was the only way to have your dog. Well, I mean, that's where we're at right now, actually. So I guess it's not going to change.
Were there any locations in Valley West that were accepted, that looked...
Yeah, um, we had, and I don't have a photo, I don't think on these, um, slides, but for the, in, up in Valley West, along the Valley West Park, which the northern part of that is Howland Park with the, um, basketball court and the Great Mural and all, um, the playground that is right there on Howland Drive, um, that public park continues and wraps, um, to the west of, um, Valley West Boulevard. Um, and it is that, that we have a, um, an MOU with Laurel Tree School that is adjoining, um, and they utilize that open space, um, community members utilize that open space. It is challenging, um, and I'm sure if, if you live in Valley West, you, you've, you've enjoyed seeing the Lake Valley West Park. Um, it is, um, public access and, but it's also a, you know, drainage and stormwater detention in the winter. Um, and so it's hard to plan for fixed infrastructure for all year. Um, that was one of the challenges, um, in considering that site. I, I don't think that is insurmountable, um, but just was, I think, part of the rationale for why that wasn't, um, recommended, uh, last year.
I think you did have a slide showing the Howland, uh, Valley West Park on Howland. It showed on one of your slides.
Oh, good. Did I? No? Uh, I don't know if I did. Okay. These are my, these are my secret hidden slides. Okay, great. Well, um, this is a shot at that westernmost Valley West Park. So we're, this is shot, uh, taken at the photo from, um, Valley West Boulevard. And so it is a great open space. Um, and it, to the west is the, um, two, uh, 101, um, corridor and, um, the current Valley Tree, Val- Laurel Tree School is right to the south. Um, and, yep, so that, that is a space that council could further consider as well.
How many acres would...
The residents currently already have named it, excuse my vernacular, but, um, Dog Boot Park, um, because there's no depository there. But we do have bags.
What, what is the acreage for...
Um, I don't have that at the top of my head. Um, but I think it's, i- it's a little less than an acre, but I, yep, don't have that off the top of my head.
And then Larson Park was what, a third of an acre? Is that what you said?
That's the space next to the Bocchi Ball Courts is a third of an acre.
Can we, I, I mean, I like the idea of having something in Valley West a lot.
Well, there isn't any infrastructure out here. When you're talking about Larson Park, there is some infrastructure. So there's less infrastructure to put in, fencing, et cetera. And, but, so this is a big area. You know, some people have, you know, I've never gone to the one at Hilliard out in McKinleyville. I understand it's not fenced. Is that true?
So this particular park that's up here has a meandering finger from the Mad River, so it is typically underwater. In fact, it's a great place to, um, take advantage of that water attraction and do some pontooning. Um, the, the park that you had mentioned earlier is Valley West Park on Howland Drive. And there is a cyclone fence already in place. There's fences on the side, and then also the Montessori School has a partial fence. So we would really just need one fence in the front to separate it from the playground. Um, and it is currently what the locals are using it as a dog park and a frisbee park.
Yep.
Is there, um, any possibility, uh, with the grant monies, or is there already, you know, kind of planning in place for Carlson Park to include, um, some small off-leash area within those updates that are going to be happening?
Yeah, um, that is not currently part of the design and, and was not written into to the two grants that we've received so far. That's not to say that couldn't be planned for. Um, within the Valley West community, that a dog park did not rise to the top of what, um, families and community, uh, residents voiced for having at Carlson Park. So I think, and a lot of that outreach occurred a number of years ago, and then we've been fund-seeking. Um, and so our design is trying to really be consistent with what we've, we've heard expressed within, um, Valley West so far. And I, and, and that may be outdated, um, but in the outreach we have done previously, that's why that hasn't yet been included. There will be, um, you know, there are priorities for Carlson, um, and that is a playground and a parking lot, multi-use courts, um, as well as improvements for river access and non-motorized boat launch, um, as well as EV charging stations of collaboration with RCEA and, um, a special event area. So a lot of, a lot of priorities that have come out of, um, community conversations and, and input. Um, there could still be some smaller space, but it may be limited.
There's also a wonderful ADA complaint, uh, lookout area. So, yeah.
Yeah, I'd rather see an amphitheater there or something like that than a dog park. So I think that Larson Park probably would be what I would recommend that we move forward with, you know, as a temporary.
Well, it's temporary.
Yeah, so, go ahead, Stacy.
Um, well, I do, I mean, I think it'll obviously come down to cost, which that's always what it comes down to. And when I was loo- and I think the idea of having two smaller ones is great, especially when in Valley West, not only the residents that live there, but we still also have hotels there. And so that would be a draw. When I was looking at Valley West Park, you know, it being almost an acre, that didn't make sense to me to try to fence that. That's basically like making the original dog park. So, but the smaller one, um, that we're talking about off Howland, if it's, you know, similar to Larson where it's, you know, pretty much ready to go and doesn't need as much work, maybe we could get away with two, and that would be nice. So I think maybe if, it all seems to be that we're kind of on those lines as a council, so maybe we could get some, um, you know, prices on that before budgeting.
Yeah, I think, that's what I was going to say. I think kind of general consensus right now as we're going into, to looking at budget seems to be that, um, you know, many of us indicated that Larson Park seems to be a priority for interim, and then also investigating the possibility of adding something in Valley West as well, if it's feasibly, um, financially possible for, for us to do at that time. And I think, um, the Howland Drive, uh, site that, uh, Kimberly was speaking about seems to, to be a good bet because it is already highly utilized, it's mostly fenced, and also, you know, ju- I don't know. I, I like, there's no dog parks, or I guess Hillary Park is like this, that, that there's a playground and people will, you know, be able to take their dog and also, you know, take their kids to, to go play. And the kid doesn't want to sit there and watch the dog the whole time, I imagine. And so they can play on the playground while the, the dog runs around. And I think being able to have both of those kind of resources at a spot is, is a really great benefit. So I think, um, the Howland Drive, you know, we hadn't really talked about it much, but I think, you know, the area, and I think that sounds like a great thing to look into as well. And that seems kind of the general consensus here.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention there is a perfect line of sight right there at that particular park as well.
Well, and I can see this as people running their dogs on that, too. I mean, just open space.
It's mostly underwater, though, because of...
Well, when it's not, but we have the summer, the spring, summer and fall, I think it's pretty good.
I, I think what was already mentioned prior is that it is such a large park, then we're actually going right back to what we wanted to do with the Little Lakes. It might be better to do a smaller pocket park. Um, and then it could be used, utilized year-round because the other park is not ever underwater.
Oh, well, I was just thinking during dry months, this, people could just go there and run their dogs. And it doesn't have to be sanctioned. It doesn't have to be, it, probably everyone's doing it anyway. It doesn't have to be fenced, unless you have a dog that's really unruly.
Um, right now it is. We have an MOU with Laurel Tree Charter School, so we have small children there that are utilizing the park. They do have a community garden there as well. So I guess that would be my concern is that it is a shared space and would it be safe for the smaller children or even the bigger children?
So we've done a lot of talking. I was, okay, no, one more comment. I was going to get us ready for public comment here, but if you have something else to add, Alex. Okay, let's, let's open it up to public comment. I think that is apt right now. So, uh, three minutes for in-person folks, come on up if you wish to talk about dog parks. And then we will move to online comments, and we will not be going back and forth. Okay. Thank you, Joanne.
Okay, my name's Joanne McGary. Um, I lived in San Francisco and worked at the San Francisco Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals for sixteen and a half years. I then became a National Park Ranger in the Presidio and dealt a lot with dog issues, both in the National
both in the national park lands and in neighborhoods. I had the opportunity to meet in the mayor's office in San Francisco when Willie Brown was mayor. He had one-on-one meetings with his citizens. And I came to talk to him about neighborhood dog parks. And in San Francisco at the time, more people had dogs than they have children. And the reality is, in terms of recreation, you really need to provide nearby recreation for people and their needs, whether it's children or dogs or themselves, in a nearby place where they can leave their home, walk down the street to the closest park area and hopefully have the opportunity for recreating in the way you want to recreate. And if you talk to a lot of dog behaviors and dog trainers, dogs don't need to get in a car and go down to the beach or they don't need to get in a car and go to Little Lakes if you're living in North Arcata. What dogs really need is to exercise outside with their owners if they want to be off-leash in that kind of socialization area. So at that time, you know, I was talking to Willie Brown, who lived in a neighborhood where they had a little pocket park where he did have his dog and they were, he'd throw the ball and play fetch and all with his dog. And I had my dog in another neighborhood park. And that, the reality is, that is what the future for a lot of our community is, is to be able to take your animal that you care about and you have in your home and be able to walk it nearby and exercise and recreate in the way that the dog and you want to do it. So I think focusing temporarily on building, I mean, I saw some of this fencing when I was volunteering a couple of weeks ago. You could put up a lot of temporary fencing and try these things out. It's not like rocket science. You can just do it, stake it down temporarily, see how it works. I think the D Street Linear Park is another really good location. Just set up maybe three small pocket parks in nearby areas and have people walk their dogs from their home to those parks and exercise and not focus on this destination type of park. Because that really is, in a climate changing world, not realistic. Because we don't want to be driving cars with dogs in them long distances to walk. We want to have something nearby our home to do. So I really think looking at these neighborhood parks is the ideal way to look. And do it temporarily and see how it works. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Joanne. Anybody else in person wishing to comment on dog parks? All right, we are going to move to online comments.
All right, call-in user, go ahead, call-in user one. All right, Patricia, go ahead. Go ahead, Patricia. You're unmuted. All right, we'll come back to you, Patricia. Ooh, good point. Thank you, Mayor. Hold on, hold on, Patricia. Well, actually, it looked like it was on.
Should I, is it my turn?
All right, let's see who I still have up here. Patricia?
I show being unmuted.
Sorry, Jane. Patricia, go ahead. Nope, she is unmuted. All right, she's reconnecting. We'll come back to you, Patricia.
All right, I just want to say that having a dog, and I'm right up down the street from the community forest, so we walk up the street. And it's a pretty safe street and we go up into the forest. And it does have a sidewalk. So we can walk and a lot of neighbors do walk and a lot of people come and drive up to the entry to the forest and walk there. And there's a place to park. But if we did not have that, it would be a distinct problem. I think the, Joanne's, Joanne's pointing out that little pocket parks are a great idea and that you can get that orange fencing, that temporary fencing that you could put up and stake out and try in a few different places and see how it works and if it's used. And I don't know how difficult it is to provide bins for bags, but most dog people have their own bags and take them home. So I would highly recommend that you try to have them dispersed into neighborhoods wherever possible. Obviously, we're right near the forest, so it's not a problem. But we still can't let them run. And that's a whole different deal. So, and you don't want to have to put them in the car and drive them five, 10 miles, five miles up to Hiller Park and drive back. That's not ideal. So neighborhood parks, pocket parks would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
All right, Patricia, you connected? I'm going to go to James. It might be Patricia under James. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
I can. Good work.
All right. Okay, so yeah, this is Patricia switching computers. I was wondering, I hadn't heard much about Little Lakes, like cleaning up the Little Lakes site. First, I know it's been, it's being used as a staging area and then they're a possible dog site. But I was just wondering if it was still on schedule to be cleaned up for, you know, it was considered a brown, brown site. And so I was wondering if it was still considered to be cleaned up and if it would be cleaned before it became, or if it became a dog park or whatever other usage it might be. I know with the high water table and flooding, that's always a concern with contaminants running off into the bay and into drinking water and into the neighborhood area. So anyways, I was still wondering if it was still on schedule to be cleaned, regardless if it's a dog park or not. But anyways, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Patricia. And yes, Emily touched on that earlier in her presentation briefly, just that they were hoping to begin cleanup by springtime, correct, on that property? Yes. Okay. Any more public comments online?
No more online public comments.
Okay, so that is the end of our comments. So do you need a motion from us in any way? Or have you received enough kind of consensus and general ideas going forward of what you need from us?
So what, I was thinking, Mayor, I was thinking about two things. So we've had this discussion. So I was thinking about, you know, Larson Park and let's explore that. And let's explore Howland Park and see what the numbers would be and to bring those back and make a decision on how we can move forward on those two.
That is the summary. So moved, I guess. Do you want, we can have a motion for it, why not? Yeah, okay. Motion?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to move forward at looking at those two sites and get some numbers back. All in favor?
Aye.
Beautiful. Okay, thank you. Looking forward to it. And I know my dog, Mochi, is probably looking forward to it too. Okay, so I'm going to say before we move to new business, let's take a quick five-ish minute bathroom break and we will resume by 8:00 PM, let's say. Okay. Okay, we are back. It is 8:00 PM and it is now time for new business. So our first item under new business, item A is to approve the conceptual plans and adopt the CEQA categorical exemption for the 8th and 9th Streets Improvement Projects and award a contract in the amount of $60,092 to CSW Stuber Stro Engineering Group Incorporated for Phase Two of the project and to provide plans, specifications and estimates and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. And we are going to have a staff report from Assistant City Engineer David Case.
Good evening. We have a presentation for you tonight, but before we go into that, I was going to give a little background information on the project. So back in 2020, we applied for an IIG grant, which is an infill infrastructure grant. And a couple of months later, we received that grant. It was a little under $3 million. And so that grant provided funding for a total of four different projects. The first I'm going to mention is Shea Park, which we saw earlier this evening was completed here recently. We had the ribbon cutting. The second is for Tank 1C, which is a million gallon water, water tank system that's currently under construction, center winter suspension, but under construction. And then the third is Redwood Park, which we are currently in the final design stages of that project. And so the last one is this project, 8th and 9th Street. And so aside from, there was, there was around $850,000 set aside from the grant that was earmarked for this particular project. Plus, there was about $25,000 for an artistic type element, also kind of tied to this project. So soon after we received that, the award, we put, we, we put out some, an RFP to get proposals for professional services for three different phases. The first is Phase One, which is for basically preliminary engineering, public outreach, public engagement, and then also the environmental document, their environmental assessment. And so the second phase, which was, well, I'll talk about it in a minute, in a minute, wasn't awarded, but the second phase was also in that RFP, was for the final design and estimates. And the third phase is for construction management. And so a couple of months later, we came, we brought it to council and we did award the first phase of that project to CSW ST2. So they are consultants. And so right now, we've essentially completed all the work as part of the first phase. And so this presentation is basically just giving a little background of the work that went into this, including the public outreach engagement and what led to the conceptual design and the, basically the alternatives for the design that we've, we've come up with our recommendation for tonight. So I'm going to go ahead and pass the mic to Jessica Jewitt. She is a city employee. She is a project manager for this project. And she will be starting the project or kicking off the presentation and then she'll go through introductions as well. So I believe, are we ready to go? Okay. So. Okay, there we go. So. Okay, so I'm going to pass it over.
Okay, so basically this project is to convert 8th and 9th Street to one-way travel from K to I Street. So our main council, what we're hoping to have is to approve our conceptual plans and adopt the CEQA categorical exemption for 8th and 9th Street Improvement Project, award a contract in the amount of $60,092 to CSW ST2 Engineering Consultants for Phase Two of the project and to provide plan, to provide plan specifications and estimates for the recommended studies we're going to show you and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents for our CEQA. So we're going to have a short presentation that's just going to go over the concepts that we came up with. We had numerous public outreach and we did go to TSC twice. So these are what they recommended. And then also kind of how we got there. So CSW ST2, Robert Stephens is going to give you the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Jessica and David. And Mayor and council members, thank you for having us here this evening. We'd like to present the outcome of the last year's work on 8th and 9th Street. We'll start talking a little bit about the context of the corridors. As Jessica and David mentioned, this is along 8th and 9th Street, just west of the plaza. It's between K and I Streets, as you can see in the. It's between K and I Streets, as you can see in the image on the screen. So we started with defining general goals, and we did this with several stakeholders and community groups. And we really wanted to facilitate public involvement in the planning of the project. We really, and we found this to be true, that really providing a really enhanced link between the plaza and the Creamery District was really a key of this project, really improving that connectivity along 8th and 9th Street. Of course, with that, pedestrian and bicycle safety was critical. We wanted to minimize expenses of the city's general fund and really beautify, enhance this corridor. And just to note, these goals are consistent with the Plaza Improvement Task Force's recommendations. We're all, I think, very familiar with the context. It's a mixed residential and commercial corridor with several key intersections where, you know, folks are having difficulty competing with traffic to cross the streets. We have a lot of bike activity moving in the corridor, and also we have some fairly narrow sidewalks that really don't promote pedestrian circulation. There's some really interesting artwork in the Creamery that we think is really inspiring, and we think bringing that eastward towards the plaza could really enhance and make visitors to the community more aware that there's a lot of great destinations west of the plaza. So as Jessica and David mentioned, we have done quite a bit of outreach. I'd like to thank several community volunteers with whom we met with on several occasions. It commenced with a field walk in the corridor last June. It's really, really inspiring. I really thank all those folks. Really helpful to see their firsthand accounts of the challenges. We also met with the Transportation and Safety Committee on several occasions, and they helped to really give us some great feedback and refine the recommended alternative that we will show you. We had a great, great meeting. And Julia is here with me. She is my colleague at CSW. We had a great meeting on October 1st, where we actually mocked up what the street would look like. You can see the cones and the stencils and some plants on the street. We set up a booth. We talked to a lot of folks about what they saw for 8th and 9th Street. You can see the comments here. Wider sidewalks, please. Add bike parking. You know, make K Street crossing a priority. Bring street art in. We also, at the same time, we released an online survey. And as you can see, we asked folks about how do they travel to Arcata Plaza, pretty uniformly distributed between walking, biking, and going by vehicle. We found out that the challenge between walking between Arcata Plaza and the Creamery District was really no retail attractions, not enough light, too many vehicles. And then finally, we presented a series of alternatives in the survey, and our respondents really favored a balanced approach that really looked to equal access for pedestrians and bicyclists, so that they could safely navigate the corridor, but provide access to vehicles so they can travel and park to destinations. And then finally, we asked folks, what features would they really like to see, or what amenities would they really like to see? And we saw that bike racks and seating were really kind of the top two most important points. One comment that folks meant is that the K Street intersections at 8th and 9th are critical, really difficult to get across. So the project is going to feature not only the rectangular rapid flashing beacons that you see in the image in the center, but also bulbouts and some improved lighting in the intersections so folks can be more visible to vehicles. And then finally, we'll talk a little bit about the street options. I'm going to show you, the first option I show you is kind of a runner-up, and then the second option will be the one that we're recommending this evening. This here is 8th Street we're going to talk about first. As Jessica mentioned, 8th Street is going to be converted into one-way travel in the eastbound direction. So we're heading towards the plaza. It's very similar to the way traffic moves currently beyond I Street. Just to familiarize yourselves with this sketch, K Street is on the left, J Street is in the center, I Street is here, and the co-op is right here. The yellow area is our sidewalks. The blue area is parking. The cyan color is sort of an enhanced widened bulbout area, really designed to improve pedestrian crossing. You can see in this option, we looked at adding angle parking to make sure that we enhance parking in the downtown zone. But we also provided a bicycle lane on the left side of the roadway. And while this option is completely consistent with, you know, current design guides, it was, I would say, fairly unpopular with a lot of folks because it's very unconventional. So through working with our TSC and our community stakeholders, as well as our wonderful meeting we had on October 1st in the field, we refined the option. And this is our recommended option. Again, it's same vehicle travel in the eastbound direction, has the bulbouts at the intersection. It has a protected Class 2 bicycle lane. The protection is with really wide buffers to give the cyclist as much room from parked cars as well as traveled cars as possible. It has these pink areas here, purple areas, and we're calling these sort of like opportunity zones. They could be, you know, locations for some art, maybe some seating, maybe some landscaping, all sorts of different opportunity zones that the community could use in design as they see fit moving forward. And again, this option here, great for bikes, great for pedestrians, cars, doesn't hurt circulation for cars, and this one is about $410,000 to implement. We want to note that we're working with our partners at the North Coast Co-op to refine circulation in and out of the shop there, and we continue working with them to make it work for everyone. 9th Street, again, similar option. This is the runner-up. This is what we went with initially. It was a two-way cycle track in which cyclists travel in both directions on the north side of the road. Vehicles travel in the westbound direction. Here's K Street down here. J Street's in the middle. The North Coast Co-op is here. And again, we have the same features here. We have this widened bulbout area to improve pedestrian access. We have this really well-marked and enhanced crosswalk location. We have some smaller opportunity zones at this location here. This is, again, a fairly unconventional layout because it has a contra-flow bike lanes or the vehicle lane travel. And our stakeholders and community members really thought that this was a preferred option, and this is what we're recommending here this evening, is really providing angle parking, Class 2 bike lanes, these really robust opportunity zones. And I think one feature that I think was really universally popular was widening the sidewalk on 9th Street between J and K here in front of this big, big, big tree right here. A lot of folks were saying it's really narrow, difficult to navigate. We think this is a real win in this option. Here, there's a lot more work on 9th Street than 8th Street. It's a little more expensive. It's about $500,000. But again, we serve all our modes of travel. So David and Jessica were really successful in securing funding for this project through Measure G as well as different grants. There's about $930,000 worth of funding, and the estimated costs to actually construct the 8th and 9th Street projects is around $910,000 as we stand in January of 2023. So in terms of budget, we're looking like we're right on target to get this implemented. So moving forward, we'd like to ask your permission to commence final design. As we're doing that, we really need to continue our really robust outreach process with the business community as well as the co-op. That would happen, you know, through February. We'll be finalizing plans and specifications in March and April, hopefully getting this project out for advertisement, for bidding in May, and then coming back to the council in July to seek a ward for a construction contract. And with that, I thank you and happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Thank you for that presentation. Very great visuals and information. So I'll turn it to the council for any questions on this project.
Well done. I'm delighted by this. I think, I mean, you know, it's grant-funded, it's safe streets, it's pulling in the complete streets that we passed, it's recommended by the Plaza Improvement Task Force, it doesn't lose any parking, protected bike lanes, wider sidewalk. I mean, I'm delighted. Thank you.
I just wanted to kind of echo that and thank city staff for finding the funding. I think all, from what I've witnessed, our staff is, they're very astute and clever at finding funding for our projects. I'm really appreciative of that. So thank you. I was, I had a question that got answered, so I was really grateful to hear that the 9th Street sidewalks would be improved and widened because those are, I think, older than the ones on 8th Street. And then just to echo the community's concern for K Street, I do appreciate the enhancements that, you know, are planned for that. Although, I think we'll have to do more. As somebody who lives directly on K Street and works from home, I see all kinds of things on a daily basis, including, we do have a lit-up intersection. We have the light you can push to cross. And unfortunately, people don't stop. And I have seen children trying to cross the street and having to literally jump back on the sidewalk to avoid being hit by a car. So whatever, I love the idea of connecting the plaza to Creamery. I think it's great. But K Street in between that is really an issue. So I think whatever we can do to mitigate that is going to be really important to get people to use it. So not, so I'm glad that that came up, and I think that we just can't underestimate that factor in it. So, thank you.
I had a question, and this just might be in my brain, a confusion, but I guess, is there future plans to extend this one-way to N Street, or is that part of the gateway plan maybe in those roadscapes? And just, yeah. Is there plans to continue that?
I can say not as part of this project.
Not as part, because I saw that, and then I was like, isn't it supposed to go to N Street? But I was like, okay, that might be in something else. And then you answered that question. And I'm just going to say, I'm really glad to see the coordination with the co-op too, and just getting, you know, everybody involved. And I live on 9th Street, and so I had a neighbor that was really involved in your guys' pop-up projects, and he really enjoyed it and just thought it was super helpful. But the one question he did have, which I'll relay to you guys, and I wanted to ask, this, and so approving this next step is to go forward to design and plans, and then we will see this project again once more before any construction happens and be able to give feedback on those final plans. But this is, what we saw tonight is the direction that it's moving. Yeah?
That's, that's correct. Just basically trying to approve the conceptual plans to move forward with the final design. And one thing I'd like to add is that, as we noted, we've talked with the co-op, and I had hoped that prior to this meeting, we could come here and tell you that we have, you know, worked with them, and we have everything sorted out 100% with regard to their parking and layout, but we're not quite there yet. So we've had, had multiple discussions with them, and we will continue to work with them in the future. But part of this project is going to require some changes to the driveways in and out and their circulation, and just portions of their parking lots. So we are, we are working with them to come up with a couple different designs for layout. And they are, they're a very good partner. They're very willing to work with us, but we just haven't settled on, you know, exactly where we're going with that yet. But we are making progress.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions on this end?
Yes, I wanted to ask why on 8th Street they took away the parallel parking. You're going with a plan that'll just be perpendicular. I don't, you're going to just go where you park along the side and you don't come in. And why did they do that? Because they would generate so much more parking. I know he's explained it, but I still, I understand the bike lane, but we have a bike lane that's going to be over on 9th and then have on an 8th. And I'm just wondering why, because, anyway, I would like it, I know, I know the citizens prefer this other, but what was the rationale?
I believe it's, you know.
Is he, is he gone? Is he gone?
No, I think Robert's still on, and I'm going to let him probably elaborate a little bit. But I believe it's primarily due to the width of the right-of-way that we have and the infrastructure that we're trying to fit within that width. So depending on the angle of the parking, you know, that's, it requires a certain offset from, from the curb, for example. And if we want to maintain a certain travel lane width, then, you know, we're just not able to do pull-in parking. So maybe, Robert, you can elaborate a little bit more on that?
Well, I know you have to have 25 feet to back up, and so maybe that's one of the issues that would happen here with the cars backing out into the right-of-way.
And that, because that was one of my questions too, Alex, and I guess my, what I assumed the rationale was to, it's a lot more dangerous to have pull-in parking like that, where you're just directly reversing out of a spot and not maybe looking around you to have a bike lane directly behind you. And the rate of incidents where you can probably back into a bicyclist, if the bike lane is right up against your parking like that, is probably a lot higher than if it's parallel and you have a forward line of sight and your mirrors can see where the bike lane is, was kind of my assumption.
I don't actually see it affecting the bikes. I see it affecting the cars driving down the road when someone backs up, and that that would be where the issues would be, pulling into the right-of-way for the cars moving along. But how many parking spaces would this provide compared to the proposed plan?
Oh, go ahead, Robert.
Oh, no, Jessica, please continue.
So this version with the angled parking would actually reduce it by one parking space, and the other version that we're recommending would keep the parking spaces the same. And so the main issue people had with the angled parking was having the bike lane on the left side. And also, people wanted to incorporate wider sidewalks, which our budget doesn't really allow for currently, but the recommended design would allow for some widening between the sidewalk between K and J in the future, because the bike lane will be striped with buffers. So that extra buffer could then be used to make wider sidewalks if you move the space over. So that was the main reason people wanted this 5A version.
Well, thank you. I have one other question. So the spacing, is that going to be for compact cars or regular cars or vans? When you think about them, how are you going to space those out, you know, put the lines down for the cars? Or is there going to, which are you figuring? Large trucks, SUVs, or compact cars?
So this recommended version will just be your standard, like how cars can fit in there. But the angle parking, that was another concern people had, was what if your vehicle was much larger? I think you might be able to speak to the actual parking legal.
Yeah, the intent was to have a mall the standard size, which I believe is 9 by 18 minimum for the city standard. Is that, that's right, Robert?
So yes, these, these all here, these stalls here, as they're delineated here, are 20 feet long. So they're, they're standard parallel stalls. So they're a little, a little longer to allow a vehicle to move in and out.
Okay. And so you're moving from your parking in, in and across the bike lane, and then you go into the transportation lane or right-of-way?
Yeah, so you would, you would, you would, you would park here as you would today, and when you leave, you would pull out across the bike lane, and you would enter the lane of travel, and you would navigate down the road. I think, I think this is a pretty typical thing that we see throughout California. This is a pretty non-typical, because a cyclist would be on the left side. And I think there was some concerns that, you know, if you're a cyclist, are you really going to go on the left side? Are you going to stay in the flow of traffic? This, I think, folks felt was just a little more regular and typical.
Robert, just to share with the council, Robert, do you want to pull up?
Robert, just to share with the council, Robert, do you wanna pull up the one with the, the parallel, or not the parallel parking, but the diagonal parking? Because I think you did look at an alternative, which would also be highly irregular, but of taking that diagonal parking and putting it on the north side of the street, so it's still one-way traffic, you would be driving eastbound, but you would be backing into that diagonal parking?
Yeah, reverse angle parking. So yes, essentially, if I was traveling down the street like this and I wanted to park, I would slow down, I would stop, and I would back into my stall like this.
Oh my gosh, that's what they do in some communities, especially in Hawaii. Everyone backs into their stalls. So maybe this is a new typical thing in certain states, and not in California necessarily, but in the United States where people back in. That's the only time I ever have accidents, is going backwards.
Robert, everybody else was shaking their head no, so just so you know.
I would say not to back in, would not, for me, I would not park there. I could never park there. So, okay, well, I just wanted justification for it, because I'm sort of curious about it. And the other thing I wanted to mention is before, when we had a redevelopment agency, which was quite some time ago, well, went away in the early 2000s, and we had a redevelopment agent, committee at that time. And one of the things they really talked about is how to connect the downtown to the Creamery District. Now, this is long before the Creamery District has now Creamery District designation. They have a coffee shop and et cetera. None of those things were operating down there. But the thought was, is how to do it with either sidewalks, trees, or lighting, so that people would feel really comfortable coming down to eat downtown, and because it's only a few blocks away, and going back and forth. So I think this is the beginning of that, to make that work. And I guess I just want to point out how long it takes projects to come about. So that was in the late 1999, I don't know, somewhere in there. 98, 97, something. And it just takes a long time, just like how long it took Foster Avenue to go through, from the 80s to the 2014 or something. Takes years to get the thought process, and then to actually get the planning and the money for it. So nothing happens overnight with government.
So I'm excited that it is finally coming to fruition, and I think it's a rarity that we have funds that exceed costs, so great job. I noticed in the survey that we have more bikes and pedestrians, and I don't remember that percentage, but it definitely exceeded the number of cars, which echoes, I'd like to echo the sentiment of Stacy or her concerns, that although we're gonna have bull belts and there's flashing crosswalks and lights, that there seems to be a need for further mitigation and safety measures for that particular area. And then I just, it looks like that, the increase from, you're looking to increase it from the original Phase 2 project from 50 to 60, is that correct? No?
No, Phase 1 was $50,000, Phase 2 is 60.
Gotcha.
I would like to report that at least currently, we are actually just slightly under budget for Phase 1, which is nice.
Thanks.
All right. Well, at this point then, I think that we should invite public comment on this item. So if you are here in person and would like to comment on the Eighth and Ninth Street Improvement Project, please make your way to the podium, and then we will take online comments after.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary. I live in the Creamery District, and I walk across that dangerous K Street all the time, at daylight and nighttime even. I actually wave the cars by me. I'd rather walk behind a car than in front of a car. And if we can improve that for pedestrians and for cyclists, I think that would be great. I'm a little concerned that the business-as-usual way of designing something is what is being recommended, when actually the unconventional route for cyclists, particularly if you're going to the Co-op, you don't have to cross in front of car traffic to turn into the Co-op. And I've been talking to the Co-op too about their bike parking, and there's talk of potentially expanding their bike parking that's gonna take away some of the car slots right in front of the store, right at that Eighth Street turn-in. Hopefully, that will come to pass, because right now, they don't have sufficient bike parking for those of us with bigger bikes than the norm. And there's a lot of people who are bicycling now to the Co-op. So I'm hoping that you'll talk to all, to them about all that as well. But the whole thing about having to ride my bike or my trike on the south side of that, of Eighth Street, and then cross into the parking lot across car traffic is less than desirable to me, and less safe, it seems to me. So I like the unconventional design that was first proposed, as opposed to what the feedback was from some of the people in part of the survey. So the other thing too, is, and I've talked to Netra about this too, those parking slots, they aren't just for cars, you know? People should be able to park any type of vehicle in those parking slots. So, you know, if we do get a real bicycle community, those slanted parking slots can also be used by vehicles other than cars. And they shouldn't be exclusive to cars particularly. So I think looking at easier access into the Co-op for a bicyclist would be my preference in the design. So if anybody can speak to that, and if I'm reading it wrong, let me know. But just because it's always been on the right-hand side that the bicyclists go and the cars are on the left of it, it seems like we can change it around to make it safer for cyclists.
I recall Phase 1, some of the concerns you had from that was, first of all, why there's only one bid on these projects for the amount of money? And I think the answer was, don't worry about it, it's free money, so you kind of moved on. So I would point out that, you know, the deficit for the state of California is projected at $24 billion this year, and also the federal government, $33 trillion. And Secretary Yelson says tomorrow is the trigger date for, you know, the meltdown with our difference in our political situation, and we might default. So you need to keep all that in mind. But the other thing I would point out, I totally agree with Stacy, that it is dangerous on the K Street and cars going there, but the in-between part from the Plaza to the K Street, I mean, I bicycle there all the time, and I walk, it's not, it's not dangerous. I mean, how it is right now, it's not like it's that many people are on the sidewalk. I mean, many people are bicycling. So you wonder, and also the sidewalks and the streets are in fine shape, they're not cracked, they're not dangerous. So the question would be, why was this focused on this area? And I believe the reason is because this is the missing link in the Gateway Project. If you look at the draft plan, you could see the, you know, the traffic plan coming from Sunset down H Street, and you're gonna turn right on Ninth. So basically, we're looking at 3,500 potential units. I mean, it could easily be like 9,000 cars coming down in the future there. And I would ask, why isn't the traffic study and the noise study that's supposed to be part of the Gateway, why wasn't that done before this was talked about? Because that obviously has a big influence on this project, and I think that's totally being ignored. And that's unfortunate, because I have talked with Plan West, and it's, I mean, I'm not getting a positive feeling that this is gonna be addressed in the way it should. It's starting to feel like sort of the answer that Cal Poly gives for the fire department. So I hope I'm wrong on this, but you really need to pay attention to, you know, your traffic studies, your noise studies, and how this is all gonna influence this whole area. Because it's, there's a lot of missing things. As I pointed out on the day of this demonstration, is that when you cross some of these other one-ways that we have, you're totally blinded. You have cars parked on the side, times there's sports utility vehicles and traffic trucks. So you have to like nudge out in a car, you can't even see the cars, and there's cars that are speeding. So there's some issues there. Thanks.
Okay. Do we have any other in-person comments? This mostly looks like city staff, so, okay. Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to comment on the Eighth and Ninth Street project?
There is. Our first one is Fred. Go ahead, Fred. Let's see, you're still muted, Fred. Can you unmute?
I have no desire to speak on this agenda item. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, call-in user aid. Go ahead.
Hello, this is Ken Swaskin. I would like to reiterate quite a bit of what was made by the last person who was commenting in person there. I've seen so many overall projects that come in little tiny sections, and they're broken up, and not really looked at an overall project. The whole concept of how this all gets fixed, in my opinion, should be done, rather than piecemeal, be done all at once. That's how good planning works. Some of you seem to say no way that it would be good to back into those parking lots. Let me give you parking places, let me give you an example of what you might really be surprised with. If you're going up Fickle Hill, you have a trailhead, and this is where you had a $3.9 million settlement. This is risk management. And the solution to that would be, you'd be pulling up back up Fickle Hill, and then you would back, back, cross traffic, back into your trailhead parking, which is, there's no organized parking there, there's nothing. In fact, a car actually backed in, I think, the other day and backed off the hill there, because there's no stops there. So if that bothers you, just in a single, where someone be behind you and stopped, can you imagine going back there? And that was the solution to the problem. And that's why I keep bringing forward the risk management things. And I think that kind of thought process should be applied to your other things. If you think it's dangerous here, you can imagine how much that's compounded with people going 40 miles an hour through an area. So just wanted to point that out, and I hope you will look at overall planning and not just segmenting your planning. It's imperative for long-term use. Thank you for opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Any other online commenters?
Our next speaker is Anthony. Go ahead, Anthony.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for all your hard work. This comment that I'm making right now is probably not gonna be as detailed or direct to some of the comments that I've made. Basically, though, the idea is the same, is that there are a lot of things that are being overlooked, especially public comments. And there's a lot of the public who's losing faith, losing hope that it even really matters to come and speak to the council or the commission. And a lot of that revolves around city management. And this is what people are talking about outside of the council meetings and the commission meetings.
Does this have to do with the Eighth and Ninth Street Improvement Project? Or are you commenting on-
Yes, it does. The part about authorizing the city manager to execute all applicable documents, and the part that several other speakers have brought up before me, that you're doing this in a disjointed way that doesn't cover all of the potential risk or even the details that matter to the public. I think that there's a real case for neglect or malfeasance, or even mis, maladministration or misfeasance that is going to be put together, and the city could get sued. People could be individually held responsible. And I think that all of you should really consider that, and also consider bringing in Cal Poly, because Cal Poly seems to have made a bad investment coming to a place that isn't ready for the type of growth that they want. And this is the reality check that is gonna either be realized now, all of us together, or it's gonna come hard and fast in the future. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any other online commenters?
Yes, our last speaker is Patricia. Go ahead, Patricia.
Okay, did it work this time?
It did.
Okay, thanks. I would, I agree with Stacy, and K Street being an issue, I cross it. I live just on the other side of K Street, so I cross it all the time.
Patricia, can you try to speak into your microphone system better?
Okay.
You're just, you keep going in and out.
Okay, so I agree with Stacy that K Street is an issue to cross. And I would highly suggest doing a stop sign at Eighth Street. It would both, it would help people to cross, and it would also slow down traffic. I think K Street has a speed issue as well. So anyways, I keep pushing for a stop sign at Eighth Street. There's a school there on the corner, so anyways, I think that would be a great solution. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Patricia. Do we have any more online comments?
No more online comments.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, I will bring it back then to the council to clarify anything, any more questions or comments, or we will have a motion on this.
So I heard you say that, I think I heard you say that this is just this proposal, and right now, there's no thinking about going from K down to M Street. And so I would imagine eventually, that'll probably be, it must be somewhere in the far distant thinking that we'll continue to move further down the street. It might be difficult, because there's some planning issues down there. We wouldn't know how to deal with curb cuts, et cetera.
This, yeah, this project originally came from the Plaza Improvement Task Force, and it was really looking at addressing to and from the Plaza. I mean, I think it's just sort of where its origination is. But perhaps you've got another comment, David, on that?
Director Loya just said that the same design was in the Gateway Plan, so.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, well, I know that the neighbors are, or one neighbor in particular was gonna repair his sidewalk, and then he was told this project is gonna repair his sidewalk and widen it, and he's just very happy when I saw him on the street the other day. So I would think that we should move forward with the approval of the concept plans and adopt a CEQA, category exemption, for Eighth and Ninth Street Improvement Project, and award the contract in the amount of $60,092 to CSW/Stubber, I don't know how you, how do you pronounce the next, Stroth Engineering Group, Inc., for Phase 2 of the project, and to provide plans, specifications, estimates, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents, which is the normal procedure.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. If we, any more comments or anything, or we shall move forward to a vote? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Moving right along, under New Business, Item B, authorize a memorandum of understanding with Turner House Innovation Labs. Can we have a staff report from Community Development Director David Loya, please?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and council members and public. I, just before I start talking about the MOU that we're asking you to authorize us to enter with Turner Labs, I did want to make a connection between the last item on the agenda and this item on the agenda, and that is by way of discussion of the IIG funds that are going to fund that project and many other projects. The Sora Place project, which was 40, 40 units of affordable housing, rent-restricted affordable-
Let's say, for example, how-
Rent-restricted affordable housing was the, the project that was used to back up the IIG funding. So Community Development and Danco Communities worked together to apply for those funds, using the Sora Place project as the base project for that. That base project for the IIG funding was also used in part to substantiate the local match for the tax credit financing that was used to fund the Sora Place project. In addition, we were successful at securing about $4 million worth of affordable housing, sustainable community funds through that project. And then in addition, we had Home and CDBG funds into the project itself. And so I only raise this because one of the early studies that we did, the infill market study, basically looked at a couple of different pro formas, which are basically, you know, you know, cost analysis for how profitable or how feasible a project would be for these different scenarios that we were projecting early in the infill planning work that we were doing. We were trying to find out, like, does it make sense to even, you know, suggest that we would build taller buildings? And many of the different kinds of projects that came out of that analysis, those pro forma that we did, suggested that there would need to be substantial subsidy that would come to these projects to make them, you know, not only affordable to the individuals living inside of them, but affordable to build. And so, you know, that was a one-off pro forma. And we were seeing that happen in our community. And so, you know, that was a one-off pro forma, and we were seeing that happen in our community. We weren't seeing these projects built unless, you know, Community Development, you know, Engineering Department were working together to, you know, get these projects done, to perform on the grants so that we can continue to, you know, seek those grant fundings to, you know, bring more affordable housing. And affordable housing is great, affordable housing in this sense I'm using is rent restricted housing, but we all know that we need all kinds of housing in the community as well. We've been really good at these, you know, at these grant programs and securing the funding to bring in affordable housing into our community over the last couple of decades, and we're proud of that work. The pro formas, though, were a little disturbing, there were only certain kinds of build types that would pencil on their own in our infill market study. And you can imagine, every time you do the infill market study, you're going to do a one-off pro forma based on the conditions as they are at the time. So the market conditions, the policy conditions, you run a pro forma, it's very manual, manually, you know, intensive, you have to, you know, run the calculations for each scenario. And the reason why I've done this big buildup, to sort of connect the dots between all these different practical pieces and this very abstract agreement that we're asking you to allow us to enter, is because the Turner Labs is proposing to work with the City of Arcata to take the now-existing market conditions, the now-existing policy that we have in place as defined through our land use code, our zoning ordinances, our building codes, to develop a model that effectively runs thousands of pro formas in, you know, basically in instant with the ability to modify those variables. And so, we paid to have AED produce a pro forma, a one-off pro forma, that is probably out of date at this point for many of the projects that we looked at because market conditions have changed. And the idea behind that was, you know, still very useful to help us identify, you know, paths forward for our planning work. What the Turner Labs is proposing is to provide us a tool that allows us to flex those variables so we can decide, you know, if we wanted to have, you know, three parking spaces per unit as a minimum, how would that affect the probability that the site would be developed? If we wanted to slide that scale down to a half a parking space per unit, so every two units would share one space is one way of looking at it, or emphasizing other, you know, building developments, what happens to the profitability of that project? So it's a really powerful tool that we'll be able to use to vet through some of the ideas that we're working right now to identify in these infill opportunity zones. The different policy decisions that we make, we'll be able to see in real time, how do those affect the probability that these sites will be developed? So it's pretty exciting, you know, instead of doing a one-off pro forma on a site-by-site basis, we'll be able to see a regional, you know, pro forma developed that ranks different properties based on those policy decisions. I've been working with the lab director, Eric Casey, and he has, you know, provided us with an option that allows us to enter this, you know, effectively at no cost, to test the model. I'll be coming back to you with a request to authorize grant funding to help facilitate the full three-year program that's identified in your packet there. And so I'm real hopeful that even if we aren't successful at getting the additional funding or if we can't find it through, you know, the Turner Labs who sometimes finds, you know, sources of funds through philanthropic sources that we may be able to avail ourselves of and get the three-year plan anyway. I still think that there's something useful that comes out of this, that we'll be able to take that model and really start to understand, you know, how, given different market conditions and policy decisions that we're contemplating, you know, how likely it is that these developments will occur. At the end of the day, we want to build a code that will actually generate housing. And so, you know, I'm excited to bring this to council and to the community, and to the discussion around these infill opportunity zones, and I would ask that you authorize the city attorney to finalize the MOU, if there are any final tweaks, and the city manager to sign that MOU to allow us to enter into this working agreement with the Turner Labs. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and I wanted to identify too that I have a seven-minute video that explains it in more detail, but due to late hour and the folks that have been waiting all night to work on the next topic, I'll spare you unless you're really desiring to see it.
Can you email it to us?
I can, and I also emailed you the dashboard that they built for LA a couple of weeks ago. That's really fun to slide the sliders around and see the colors change from red to like, no, this is never going to happen, to green, like, yeah, that's a high likelihood.
Did you say that you, we did have time for some questions, or?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, great, I did have a couple of questions or concerns. So, I hear you, you know, it appears that we have nothing to lose, and I guess I have some concerns. We talked about REAP as identified funding for a three-year program, but we need housing now, and one of the objections to other things that we've been wanting to do, community engagement as such, was that it would take more time, and so that's my concern, is that we might be entering into a three-year contract and not getting to what we should be doing, and that perhaps that six months might be better to be developing Forman Code. I also looked into these folks. They seem to be Wimby's, which is, you know, Wall Street are backing this. It's kind of a quasi-kind of organization, like, saying like, oh, it's done by interns. We don't even know if it's going to be done, which is great that these interns might do it. I love that students can get paid, but it seems like it really isn't associated, it's just like this arm from UC Berkeley. The sample that they use is a gigantic apartment complex in LA, and this is going to result in low-quality, high-rise buildings not taking into account the multi-housing opportunities that I thought we wanted as Arcata, like homeownership opportunities, cooperatives, and land trusts. I noticed that right in the bat, when we're looking at their MOU, there's this anti-regulatory bias inherent in their modeling, and so they proposed to adapt, like, small cities like Arcata, but the model's only been applied to, like, a multifamily rental development in LA. There's no indication that this particular model is going to actually be willing to tailor explicitly to Arcata's particular needs or development opportunities. I think this could be a good opportunity for Arcata if the model developers had simply offered to use Arcata data to develop their research and to adapt this model to a smaller city application for free, rather than asking the city to pay for that research. Or better yet, maybe they should be paying us for that research, because, you know, although it can yield some interest, it could yield some interesting results, but realistically, if we're going to be paying possibly, well, $100,000, $250,000 to get a grad student model, possibly, to tell us that no one would want to build high-quality affordable apartments in Arcata the way that we want to protect our community. And then the timelines, what happens if the timelines don't line up with our gateway area plan? The 5,000 ramp on for six months, guinea pigging is not necessarily going to come at a time where it's most useful for the gateway area plan code and the general plan code and development. And then what I read was, the data's not even going to be accessible after the completion unless we engage in a three-year contract. It's going to be available for six months, right after the completion of the project, and then it's either like, we pay, or we have to pay to get our own data back, which seems absurd, so then we're kind of locked into this MOU. In addition to the initial $50,000, this money that is necessary to, I just feel like this staff time is that we would be using to give them all the data they need parcel by parcel. Might be better that we use our staff time to go forward and develop our code right now. Which we're already, you know, we should be fully engaged in that. And it's not like they're going to be able to just plug into some database, it's going to take, they even said in their MOU that this is going to take some reasonable amount of staff time. There is no room for community engagement, input, or involvement, and Arcata truly would be the guinea pig. There's no way that the model will do any more than what a particular set of regulations might be penciled out by possibly one of our likely builders. So I guess, you know, since large-scale apartment development, Arcata will need to compete with investment money from other investment potential investors that they can make, then their choices are going to depend on, you know, the same thing, external financial market conditions as any other local regulation, and that in that context, then it's unlikely that any standard is going to be any more stringent than, like, the lowest common denominator. I don't think we want the lowest common denominator, you know, just because that's the only thing that's going to pencil out in this type of model. So unless it's tied, as you pointed out, to subsidy from a developer, and then we lose our community benefit bonuses. So I guess I just wanted to, in some, point out that this dashboard was just introduced less than three months ago, and by making such a dashboard useful, as those standard-setting processes to continue would lock in our city for even a longer extended contract, and while they're still using Arcata as the guinea pig for a scaled-down model, it looks like a great bargain, and it could become, you know, useful, extremely expensive too, and using funds that our planners right now need to support the work that we should be doing now. We should be spending the next six months developing standards and code features, and my concern is that this is going to squelch them, because it's from big cities, they have big apartment complexes, and it's not going to be scaled down to what we need in Arcata, and I just took a whole lot of time, so I apologize.
Yeah, and I was hoping David that maybe you could clarify some of those points, because I, my understanding is that it is free, and we get to, it's the free trial, basically, we get to try it out and see how it works, and then we can decide if we want to go into an MOU that will cost us grant money. And just to add, this is actually kind of the thing that people have been asking for, and if we want to do it, we should do it now as soon as possible, because the question I feel like a lot of people have been asking is, well, why are we going to build buildings this tall if they don't pencil out? So it's really easy and accessible to be able to participate in this process as, and from my understanding from conversations with staff, is that they reached out to us because they want to have more small rural communities that are, to build this dashboard, and basically, they're not going to be using LA's data, I didn't really understand what you were saying there, they're not going to be using projects from LA to go to here. They're going to be using our housing policy and looking at our codes to be able to decide if certain, any type of housing project, we could say it's two stories, we could say it's eight stories, we could say it's this X many number of units, how much space it takes, and how that will pencil out on a specific parcel, right? Is that true? But, I mean, just to play off of that, that seems like what people have been asking for, and if we can do it now, as soon as possible, before we're approving these codes and approving gateway project plans and approving general plans and looking at these different other infill areas of the community, that we want to do it as soon as possible to know, yeah, why would we approve eight stories if it doesn't pencil anywhere? And it's really cool to find that out, so.
Yeah, there was a lot in there on both counts, but I think that, you know, you, Mayor Saunders, you've got the, you've summarized the key points, I think, really well. The fact that something can't be built today because of market conditions doesn't mean that it won't be built in five years, in 10 years, in 15 years, because we don't know the market conditions. So what the tool will allow you to do is to adjust the variables, and so if right now it's $300 a square foot to build, or $400 a square foot to build, because the cost of materials has been going up, you know, through the pandemic, we had, you know, shortages and et cetera, et cetera, we know that previous to that, it was 250 to 300. And so you can look at, well, what does it cost at $400 a square right now? And then you could take that same set of parameters and slide the slider down and see, well, what is it, what if we went back to 250, 300 a square? You could also take a look at, you know, since cost is not the only variable, there are factors that we have under our control within our policy that affect the development potential of these sites, you can flex those as well. So you might say, well, I'm expecting the costs to continue to go up, so I'm going to assume that it's going to be $500 a square in the future. What are the policy decisions that we can make that will affect the viability of these future projects? You know, within this model. Now, it is, you know, it's a model, you know, it's running pro forma-type probabilities, but they're based on, you know, pretty solidly grounded methodologies. It's the same type of modeling that a developer would do when they came to our community and sat down and looked at a specific parcel and said, well, can I make this work for me? And then as to the timing, I mean, I think it's really important to, you know, to acknowledge that, you know, we are trying to get housing built. We're also trying to get the planning documents in order and work through that policy work that we're doing, and, you know, it would be ideal if the timing lined up, but it may be that the, you know, gateway area plan is largely put together. We're still working on parallel tracks, we're working through the Forman Base Code to, you know, try and bring that together. As the vice chair of the Planning Commission said earlier, I conveyed the council's, what I heard is the council's desire to get the work done in the next six months. I conveyed that to the Planning Commission, they took it seriously, they're working on doing that. This work will probably take about that same time period, about six months. And so, one way it could be used is that we use it to make last-minute flexes, you know, if we settled on, you know, one parking space per unit and we ran the model for the gateway area and found out that, you know, really, you know, it pencils much, it will have higher probability of penciling if we did, you know, .75 parking spaces per unit. We can make those last-minute decisions for that, for that plan. But I also want to point out that we have, you know, four other planner areas within the city that we're looking at doing, you know, similar type work for, and so the model will be very useful for, you know, for those purposes as well. I hope I've addressed the primary concerns.
So that's a really good point, so we can use this not only for the gateway, but for other places that we're building. And also, we can do this in tandem with all the other things that we're doing. We don't have to do this and wait for everything else, it can be done at the same time, so we're not really compromising any time.
Yeah, absolutely, and, you know, one of the areas where this is really important, I mean, right now we're working with the Planning Commission on community amenities for the Community Benefits Program. The concept being that if you come in with a plan and it meets the Forman Base Code requirements and you check the boxes on the community amenities, then you go to a ministerial process. We want to make sure that our community amenities program doesn't make development unfeasible, because, you know, we can want to have certain communities, amenities, or benefits, but if we, if it's not feasible to build with those community benefits programs, then we need to know that upfront, right? And so, we can use this modeling to help, you know, sort through, what is the additional cost that's associated with development? Not necessarily every single community amenity, but what's the additional cost that, you know, can be absorbed by these projects? And that will help guide us, you know, when we're deciding, you know, what community benefits programs to adopt. It'll help guide us when we go to the next, you know, set of infill opportunity zones and try and develop standards for those. So I think it has multiple applications, you know, both for the gateway area plan and also future planning.
What is the free trial period, like, how long are we talking with this, like?
I believe the development of the model will take about six months, and then we'll have about six months of support. My understanding from my conversations with Alex is that they don't, the model doesn't go dark at that point, it just doesn't continue to get updated. They are going to use our local data, all of our local market conditions, all of our local zoning, and then put, you know, buffers around that. So if right now, you know, we require a minimum of one parking space per unit, for example, in almost every district, except the downtown where there's no parking required, until you get above a certain threshold. So you would program in one parking per unit as sort of the standard, but then the slider, the sliding scale around that can allow you to adjust and see, well, what happens to development if we go up or down.
Yeah, I get that, so this is going to come back to us, we're approving just this free period, and then when it comes back to us, do we have the wherewithal to say, all right, maybe we don't want it for three years, maybe it can be for one year? I mean, what is the wiggle room with the contract?
Yeah, there's not really, I mean, I can talk to them and see if they would negotiate other terms. other terms. Um, I am planning on coming back either at your next meeting or the very next following that, uh, with a request for authorization to apply for, uh, REAP 2.0, the Regional Early Action Planning Grant, uh, the second phase of that that the state's put out. Um, and with that, uh, application, you know, we'd be looking to fund this project for the, the three-year term, getting 50,000 to fund that project for the three-year term. Um, and then some, uh, pre-development costs for, for open door, uh, is kind of what we're, we're planning on for that, that application. Um, and so it would be, you know, it'd be grant funded, um, if, if it gets approved and sort of if it doesn't get appro- if that grant doesn't get approved, um, then either, you know, we could, if we decide we really want to pursue other opportunities or, um, you know, the Turner Lab has also said that they will commit to trying to find funding for us. Um, so it's, it's just $50,000 additional if we want the three-year program or if we want to do basically the six months. So.
So could you clarify? Cause I am a little bit apparently confused because I thought they were asking, so basically we do the free trial for six months. And if it takes longer than six months, we don't use it, we don't lose it. But it looks like we're having to basically buy if we don't get there in time. So, I mean, do we as staff have enough time to give them all the input and data because they're going to hold us accountable to that? And then I guess my big question is, is it our intention to go ahead and buy into the 50 to $1,000 contract?
Um, so the first question, yeah, we have the data, data all pretty readily available. It's, um, you know, can be easily exported from our GIS database. Um, from the conversation that I had, um, I think we would be able to do that. And there's going to be coordination back and forth. Um, and I think that if the council says, yeah, we want to go forward with this, then we will absolutely commit to, you know, to that time necessary to get the project done. Um, to the second question, um, you know, I, I, staff would recommend that, yeah, we try and pursue the, the three-year term and try and get the full, uh, build out of the model with the, the additional support that helps us update the model over time as, as conditions change.
So do you feel that if we were to apply for a REAP, help me try, I thought for some reason that the REAP was for community engagement, but that's not the case?
Uh, the REAP is pretty flexible. REAP, um, the REAP 2.0 funds are pretty flexible. Uh, the idea, um, the main ideas behind them is, um, uh, that you are, uh, in some way creating housing. So they want to see housing produced as a result of the.
So the fact that this doesn't have any community engagement will not keep us from applying for that particular grant. What about the fact that there's no history, um, on this particular project that they don't have any, we don't, you know what I mean? There's like, they don't have a product other than one and it was three months ago. So it's like brand new. I mean, for us to be the guinea pig, and then if we don't get it done, we're going to have to pay them $50,000 just to have access to our very own data that we gave them. That, that's what it, I mean, unless I misreading this.
So like just on packet page 135 at the bottom where it says updates, up to six months of collaborative, collaborative onboarding, policy structure customization and data updates and up to six months of basic training and simulation consultation from Turner Lab staff. That is included. Six months of each of those things. The option to enter into a three-year agreement and access additional simulation support. So updates that they make to their general system. But as you said before, David, we don't lose it. It just doesn't get updated, right?
We don't have access to it is what it says here. We just don't have access to it.
Um, I think they stopped supporting it after the six-month term. Uh, maybe you can point me to specifically the language that you're referring to.
I'm on packet page 135.
That's where I'm at. Oh, so that's where the MOU is.
I'm sorry. Can you help me hone in a little bit more on what you're?
I was reading and looking at the part, um, that said updates at the very bottom of page 135.
Yeah, what?
And that's what I'm, that's what I see too, is updates, up to six months of collaboration onboarding.
So I think it's on 136, um, the timeline and the process. So they want to start in February, um, which is right away, which is good. Um, and then, you know, of course it's dependent on how we can get them what they need. Um, and then the expectations are laid out, basically anywhere between, well, up to 20 hours of staff time are going to be needed. Um, and then it says, if there's a delay or subsequent elevation period, it looks like.
Yeah. So maybe I can, um, try and square this up. I mean, they, they want to make sure that we're committed and that we're working with them. They're committed to doing the, the, you know, uploads within the six-month timeframe. We're committed to doing that. If because of our delays, if we just choose not to work with them and the work product isn't finished, they are telling us that they're not going to commit to giving us, um, you know, the, the simulation. The data is still ours. We gave them the data. We're going to have the data. It's just that we're not going to have a simulation tool at the other end of that. So, you know, I can tell you that I professionally and personally am very excited about this work and will commit to make sure that we get the data to them and that we work in responsive and that we have at the very least that six-month term that we can, you know, use the tool. And if we want to assess through that period, whether or not it's worth, uh, doing the additional, uh, you know, term, then we can do that. If you want to go forward with the REAP 2.0 funding and commit early and, and decide to, you know, pay for the three-year term, we can also do that.
So the, I did find that part that I was concerned about and maybe it's not a concern, but it's on bottom packet, page 136. This is the duration of the agreement, limited ongoing support, options for expanded contract due to the onboarding fee waiver, which is like a gotcha here in my opinion. We're offering limited term access to the dashboard for six months following the delivery of the complete product. So if we don't align up with our plan, Gateway Area Plan, um, at the same time, then we're going to lose access. And the only way we can get access is to give them 50 grand or a hundred grand, depending if we do the, is it an all or nothing? Like, do you have to do the full contract three years or?
First, I think it's just, it's, it is 50,000 for the three years. It's not 50,000 per year.
Okay. So I thought it was free first year, 50, second, third year, 50. So it's 50 total for all three.
Yeah. But regardless, that's still a lot of money. Um, and, and I think, you know, it, the contract's going to be laid out in a way that, that establishes that accountability. Um, I think that we probably can, you know, meet the terms of that contract or we won't be bringing this to you. It's a matter of that this is where we want to invest our time right now.
So do you feel that it's a concern when I look to see like who are, who, who's, you know, backing this? That it was real estate investors, that it was international investors, real estate developers? I guess my fear is that we're going to have people from the outside coming in and creating something that we don't necessarily want. And it's going to be taking the money when they're done with them.
So you're, you're, you're referring to, uh, outside investors that are coming in, hedge fund people that want, this is what I'm thinking, Kimberly, that you're worried about, that we'll have investors coming in to develop in our area and we won't have local funds staying here. They'll go off to wherever. And that is always a possibility.
I guess the people that are funding the Turner Project, um, are all Wall Street folks. And so that seemed like a red light for me. Maybe I'm the only one who's like, ooh.
Well, I have another question when we can resolve this one.
I mean, yeah, and that's just a question of a, a point of discussion. And, you know, I think taking those people's money to effectively see if housing works in our community and to use it through a funneled university, uh, to be able to see how this works and, and participate in creating more data for our entire state. I think it's important to be a stakeholder in that. And, you know, it doesn't really, I don't, you know, I'm, I'm not too worried. I looked into the Turner, Turner Lab as well and I didn't, you know, see any huge red flags in my opinion. So that, that's a point of discussion. And I think, you know, we're seeing that there might be some fundamental disagreement between a few of us. And that's, that's part of the local government is to have those discussions and, you know, we'll eventually go to a, a vote and, and see what happens. But, um, you know, that, yeah, it's not, it's not a huge holdup for me.
So Mayor, I, I do have a, a fundamental question, maybe? You know, I'm thinking you mentioned the Open Door Clinic. And so when I think about the form-based codes and the whole process that we're going through, I mean, I know it's targeted for the Gateway, but I look at it as something that we can use throughout all of Arcata. And that's my goal of, uh, seeing it come to fruition. But using the Open Door Clinic, and they have two parcels, both of them have buildings on that. So this pro forma is going to talk about re- clearing those buildings, moving them off, you know, and then being able to build on top of those buildings, um, on those sites. And they will look at that because when you get into looking at a lot of our property, we already have other uses on it or empty uses or viable uses that are not going to be maybe compatible with the housing, future housing needs that we're thinking about. So I'm hoping that they look at that and that's all part of this pro forma.
Yeah. And that's a really great point, Alex. And I, I just, you know, to add the idea that like, when we talk about planning and building housing, like the Gateway is not the only thing that's happening in this community, you know, surrounding building housing. And everybody wants to, you know, apply this directly to the Gateway, but, you know, we still have Stacy and Alex sitting up here. It doesn't really necessarily have a hundred percent to do with that. And yeah, it has to do with housing production, but we need to think outside bigger, not only even in, in housing production, but yeah, working on, um, you know, updating the clinic buildings, everything like that. Like we can see how development pencils in this community.
Because the Open Door Clinic is very interested in building workforce housing. And when they finish their clinic on Foster, they will be closing those clinics down and moving those operations into their new facility. Meanwhile, they'll have those two, uh, facilities empty and they really want to put workforce housing on it, which means they have to remove what is this existing on it. And I know for one, they've already done their initial historic, uh, review to see what, you know, for that project so that it can come forward to the city and have had that review done. And, um, but I look at development and what you have to do to prepare for it. And I was talking to a developer recently and they said, oh my gosh, when you look at what's left in Arcata, you're talking about having to remove buildings, having to remove concrete, having to do soil studies just to be able to get to the point where you can even start to build. So I'm hoping, you know, the performers, they're going to be looking at all of that and will be looking at individual properties and analyzing that because that's something that's very valuable.
Okay. So I know, uh, Councilmember Atkin Salazar has a point to make and then I think we've all made a lot of points and it would be, uh, behoove us as the hour grows late to take public comment and then, uh, get down to brass tacks. So let's hear from Stacy and then we'll take public comment.
So I really just have a simple question. And this is my first and only point, just to make that point. Um, so we both serve, um, in a housing group that, you know, talks about regional housing. And I know part of that conversation has been about a housing dashboard. And so I'm just checking in with you to make sure that we're not duplicating efforts. And from, from what I'm seeing, well, you know, these type of, um, housing dashboards are very popular right now in communities. It's a great tool. So I'm very supportive of this. Um, but I'm just wondering, and I'm assuming that the one that we're entering into is very specific and a more of a deep dive into Arcata versus the more, um, kind of, I guess a little more basic overall regional county housing dashboard that we're looking at. Is that true?
Yeah, that's absolutely true. I, I would say there's a zero overlap between these two dashboards, except for the name dashboard.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I just want to make sure we're, and I, I mean, I assume we're in the same meeting, so I assumed that to be true, but just wanted to ask also in case any, if any of our peers are watching and wondering why Arcade is going rogue, but we're not. So thank you.
Okay. I think now is a great time to invite public comment on this item. So if we have anybody here in person that would like to comment on the memorandum of understanding with Turner Housing Innovation Labs, please make your way to the podium. And if you are on Zoom, now's a great time to just already raise that hand. Okay, take it away.
Took a look at what they did for LA County. So one thing that really spot stood out was they had mid-rise and high-rise and price per square foot. Um, it was, I was really shocked. It was quite low. It was like two, around 250, a little more for high-rise. So, uh, we just had Danco, um, Ollie Brown Bag Special. You can check it out on YouTube if you haven't already. They gave a, a price per square foot for what they've done here. That's, um, high 300s approaching 400 a square foot. And they even said, uh, Danco said that they're not even getting subs to give them bids because, you know, the basically, uh, material cost has doubled, tripled in the last two years and also labor. So, um, a little skeptical about that that was so far off, but, uh, I'll, I'll go to the next step. Is it going to capture sea level rise? Um, is it, I mean, that's a pretty, um, a critical element of the whole thing. And, um, my suggestion would have been like a year ago, the free software, which is, uh, Cal Poly with their Sea Rise Institute. And you have some of the, the experts in the state right here. And, um, we have the Coastal Commission right down the street too, that you should really have a joint session with the Planning Commission and the Council and really get what's going on there. Cause I, I'm not sure this software is going to, to answer those things. And that seems to be a really important subject to, to answer. Um, so I'll be sending you some more information on that because there's some new laws regarding the Coastal Act that with sea level rise that I don't think anybody's aware of that are out. And, um, so I don't think this software is going to capture that. But I mean, I mean, if you go for it, I go, that's your choice. But I just don't think it's answering all these things. The other thing is how about Danco? Bring them in and answer these things because they're, you know, they got the answers. They're doing all the, the building and, um, and basically what I'm hearing from them, if you want affordable housing, it's four stories and less. If you go over four stories, you're not going to have affordable housing. That's their statement, not mine. So you should really have them come in because, I mean, they're the, they're the folks that are doing all this. So, I mean, it just makes sense to get the information from them. I mean, it really looks like seven stories is, um, kind of, uh, you know, for rich people right at this, at this moment. I mean, that's what it's sounding like. If you want that high, it's for wealthy people.
Thank you. Okay. More comments here. Let's get up to that podium.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm all in favor of this. Um, but there are some things that I wanted to mention. Um, the, we do want more information. More information is almost always better, but please be aware that there are people who may disagree with the results of the dashboard, as we'll, we'll find out when it comes in, when the information does come in. Uh, it's clear that, uh, the community development staff is very willing and desirous of putting in the time that it will take to get this going. So I say, try it. We might learn something that we don't know currently. Um, I'll say that, um, you know, on the sliding scale where you can move it for the cost, I don't think it's likely costs are going to go down. Even if the cost of materials goes down, that is not the whole cost of it building. The, um, David, you mentioned a video that's available. If that could be pleased posted to the city's YouTube channel, uh, so we can see. I'm very interested in seeing that. Um, let's see. Um, as Gregory mentioned, how about asking Chris Dart, Danko or Kirk Kahoon at Greenway Partners? They're smart people and they've done lots of pro formas. They know what our issues are here. Um, the, uh, it was mentioned that this will help with the calculation of profitability. I think we need our own dashboard that has to do with the needs of the people, the renters. And when we talk about, uh, is it more profitable to have one parking space for two units? They could be one bedroom units or two bedroom or three bedroom units. That has to deal with people, people's needs. And, um, last, uh, uh, David, you mentioned in passing that we intend to have the Gateway Project Plan completed, ready for adoption by July. I strongly disagree. I don't think we're anywhere close on that. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Fred.
Just real quick, I took an economics class in college and, um, there was a book called Tom Stoffel, There Ain't No Such Thing As A Free Lunch. And, um, I really appreciated Councilmember White bringing to our attention a little background on this, um, a little background on this group that's being suggested that we enlist with. So I'm glad it's been brought up. I'm interested to see how everybody votes, but I just, you know, I'm wary sometimes of Wall Street. So I appreciate it being brought up and captured on video here. Thanks.
Thank you, Joanne. Do we have any comments online on the Turner Labs?
We do. Our first one is Sherri. Go ahead, Sherri.
Hi, good evening, city council members. I think it is important to know who the Turner Center is funded by, as that is who they really answer to. Major funding is provided to the Turner Center by the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative, Facebook in our backyard, Meta, again, Facebook, Wells Fargo, Bank of America, Citi, Fannie Mae, JP Morgan Chase, Morgan Stanley, the James P. Irvine Foundation. For those of you who are not from SoCal, the Irvine Company is a developer responsible for Orange County Sprawl, and the California Association of Realtors. If you go ahead with this, which you probably will, I hope their report will discuss developers' expected return on investment. That's one of the big mysteries through this whole thing to me. What ROI do they expect? 30%? Is it 35%? Would they be willing to only take 25% in ROI? It seems that this is a way for corporate developers to twist the city's arms regarding amenities. With too-big-to-fail banking and libertarian, anti-democratic social media shining a spotlight on Arcata, I won't be surprised when corporate developers build tiny rental units managed by absentee landlords and owned by real estate investment trusts. In the Turner Center's LA model in the end notes, they state that their model is for rental units only, but we need homeownership in this town. They also state that once some projects are built, and the ROI of following projects fails, the likelihood of additional building projects decreases, which in the end just supports high rents. This seems to support maximization of developer profits and limits affordability. We need to pursue community land trust opportunities to provide affordability to our residents, not luxury towers for the 1%. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have more Zoom comments?
We do. We have two. Our next one is Anthony. Go ahead, Anthony.
Hello. I want to thank Sherri Starr for bringing that very important information to the public awareness because I've been doing some research on their company as well while you're all talking, and it's very limited, basically limited to their own website. And I think, I want to, I want to thank Kimberly White as well for bringing up her concerns because I quite frankly don't know how the rest of you can call yourself Arcata officials knowing what you're supporting. We do not, the majority of the public is very upset with the notion of these big city developers coming in. And you guys keep awarding contracts to developers from out of this, out of Humboldt County. And it's just disgusting, honestly. I can't believe that you would even consider allowing Facebook so much influence in developing Arcata. That is a scam. You're basically scamming the public. And it's going to be, it's really important that we figure out why this is happening. And I think the majority of the public really doesn't want what you guys want. And I think that it's not going to work out the way you want it to. I think that you believe this company has some kind of authority, and that you trust them, but your trust is misguided. And I want to say that I appreciate the work you're doing, but if you approve this project, then I'm going to basically feel like my town has turned its back on all the values that I've known to love and grow up to appreciate. Our character is based in our local business economy. The cannabis industry may have collapsed, but we will not survive as a community if we let these out-of-town companies come and run the show. We have a lot of natural amenities, which they want. We have each other. We have a lot of intelligence and creativity, and we have a lot of reasons to be proud of where we live. And approving any kind of influence from Turner Labs is basically selling out our community, and it's disturbing. I would like to ask you to please reconsider working with the Turner Housing Innovative Labs because their company is obviously a scam. We all know about the wealth gap issues in our country and in our world, and what you're doing is promoting more homelessness by allowing someone who doesn't care about our economy to influence this development. Thank you.
Okay, the other hand went down. We have no more online public comment. So.
Go ahead, Alex, yes.
So what I would, I have some comments, but I would like to move to authorize the city manager to negotiate a memorandum of standing with Turner Housing Innovation Lab to develop a housing dashboard for the city of Arcata. If there's a second on that, I would just like to make some other comments.
I will second that.
Thank you. I feel like this, there were, this is, this is information we're going to be gathering for how to do projects in Arcata and what they're going to cost. I don't know how many of you had an opportunity in our community. I know Danco does performas. They have to, other developers do to figure it out. I don't know on the council, how many of us have done a performa. I have done several of them to figure out what I can do or not do on a project. And, but I'm thinking this is giving us a piece of information. And so it seems like, some people feel like they're going, Turner Housing Innovation Labs, they're going to be coming in and figuring out how to build projects within our area. And I think we'd be lucky to find people within our community and outside of our community that want to build in our community. Because after we had the, the whole project, which is now up at the Craftsman Mall, and when that got turned down by the city, it was like a fire going through California. Don't touch Arcata, because you can't trust them. And because of what the Planning Commission, the Council did. So I think doing these form-based codes, trying to get this information for we, so we can have a better understanding, is going to make it possible for other people to consider maybe building in Arcata. Because we're doing our background, we're doing our work that we need to lay a foundation for. And we need to try to get over our bad reputation that we have. And I think that this is going, is one of the many steps that we have. And I, I'm looking forward to what they have. I feel like we have two projects that we can actually see how they work, and those are the two for the open door clinic that we could sort of focus on. Anyway, I made that motion, seconded it, so there can be other comment?
I'd just like to add one comment. I like the idea of a free dashboard. My concern is that they show their bias when they equate local regulations with regulatory blockage. And then they tie that into, I mean, they're outright, I mean, I thought that Arcata was about local zoning control. And I don't want to invoke another person's name, but I'm going to. Our former mayor, Sofia Pereira, signed some position letters in opposition to SB 9 and SB 10. And it seems like the Turner MOU dashboard is contrary to what we want for Arcata.
So I don't mean to disagree with you, but what I'm, I feel like this is a tool, and it's not an, and this tool will give us some information, but it's not like it's an outcome that with them, we're all of a sudden going to have these things happen to us. That, it's a tool. I mean, I look at how many things we can have in our tool belt to figure out what we're going to do in our community. And we need a lot of tools to figure it out, and this is just one of the tools.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the table. If there are no more comments, we'll call the question and vote. All right, so all in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
You got that, Bridgette? Beautiful. All right, we are moving along. And this is our last business item. And then, community ambassadors, you've been waiting so patiently in the back, and we will get to you, and we thank you. This is part of your community services, sitting through a council meeting with all of us. So thank you, guys, for, for waiting. Okay, so our last business item tonight, item number C, is going to be introduced ordinance number 1563, amending the Arcata Municipal Code Title 8 Building Regulations to adopt Chapter 5 Electric Vehicle Charging Station Permit Streamlining, Adopt Residential and Non-Residential Checklist for Permitting Electric Vehicles and Electric Vehicle Service Equipment, and find SEQA exemption. Okay. Staff report from Joe Bishop, our building official. Hello.
Hello, and thank you for having me here, and thank you all for being here. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, city staff, especially Bridgette. Thank you for everything you do. We really appreciate you. So yeah, this one I feel is very straightforward. We are required to draft an ordinance to be in compliance with Assembly Bill 1236 and Assembly Bill 970, which imposed Government Code Section 65850.7 and 65850.71. All this is about is the permitting process for electric vehicle charging stations. So this has no impact on, this is not imposing any new regulations on the codes. This isn't a code-based thing. It's just simply saying that we will expedite permits for electric vehicle charging stations. Are there any questions?
I just, I have one.
Yeah.
Thank you. So this, it all looks fine to me, but I was wondering if you were in the email chain from Colin Fisk from CRTP, and if you could just, you know, he just brought up some concerns, I think he supports this, but also just said he felt that there was a few things maybe lacking, and not that we should necessarily not vote on this, but maybe also consider another ordinance to adopt some of what they're doing. I just wanted to get your thoughts on that.
Yes, absolutely. This was brought to my attention a few hours ago. I did read through this, and I agree 100% that this is absolutely something that if this is a council goal, we could certainly look at adding this into the ordinance. I don't see that either one excludes the other. They're not contradictory. They're very much, you know, this, like I said, this is a streamlining permit. This is more about right-of-way and more, I would almost consider this a kind of a zoning, land use type of thing that relates more to public right-of-way and things like that. So absolutely, if we would like to introduce something like this, I can help make that happen.
Yeah, can we send it to the Transportation Safety Committee to have them vet it, and then bring it back to us? That's what I would like to do with that.
Yeah, that sounds great. And yeah, Colin suggested, you know, pass this, but then suggest to staff that we move forward on something like that. And it all makes sense to me, both of these ordinances, so, yeah. Okay. Any other questions or comments from the council before we open it up to public comment on this item?
No, none for me.
Okay, so we will take now public comment. Anybody in person? Electric vehicles, going once, going twice? Okay, do we have anybody online? Electric vehicles permit streamlining.
No online public comment.
Whoo, okay, well.
I would like to make a motion.
I honestly feel, yeah.
To introduce ordinance, oh my God, my eyes are, number 1563, amending the Arcata Municipal Code Title 8 Building Regulations to adopt Chapter 5 Electric Vehicle Charging Stations Permit Streaming, Streamlining, Wave Reading of the Text and Consent to Read by Title Only. Find the adoption of Ordinance Number 1563 is exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15061, B3 of the SEQA Guidelines for reasons stated in Ordinance 1563. Am I reading the right thing? Adopt the residential and non-residential checklist for permitting electronic, electric vehicles and electric vehicle service equipment, EVSE.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Okay, unanimous. Thank you to Joe for breaking around for that one. You're almost there. We got to do public comment first, and then our community ambassadors are going to be on the floor. So item number 12 tonight is oral and written communications. The city appreciates public input, and this time is provided for people to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral written communications, we may respond to statements or requests that require council action will be, oh, God, I messed up. Speakers addressing the council may be limited to three minutes with a maximum, may be limited to three minutes. And the time limit on the overall length of oral communications may be imposed. I've lost the ability to read. If you are in person and wanting to give comment, please line up at the podium. Thank you, you are a step ahead of me. And if you're on Zoom, raise your hand, or on the phone by pressing star nine. Speakers are limited to three minutes.
Long night. Hello to the Arcata City Council and city staff. Firstly, I hope everyone's day has been going well. My name is Gerardo Hernandez. I'm a community member in Arcata, and I'm a Cal Poly Humboldt student. I'm just here to talk about the recent news regarding a part of the Arcata Fire District Statement, which refuted Cal Poly Humboldt's assessment of having, of the AFD having the resources towards helping out in like Cal Poly Humboldt's upcoming student housing projects. The university believed in their assessment that the Arcata Fire District, and I quote, adequately served, the population was in its service area. But the Arcata Fire District Board President rebutted the, refuted the university's report, going on to say, and I quote, "There is not enough available firefighting resources on duty and immediately available to evaluate and rescue occupants and contain a fire." That also relates to the Gateway Area Project, but I'm more talking about Cal Poly Humboldt, which I will get to as to why. I certainly blame my university for circulating a report which has revealed the inadequacies of AFD's firefighting infrastructure, especially seemingly when they have no communications with the AFD to have a better comprehensive assessment towards that situation right there. You know, I'm part of my university's student body government, where we've had discussions with Cal Poly Humboldt's university's housing department. And we've had a few discussions with them, with their administration, and we've asked them like, oh, you know, collaborate with the city and so on, like such as with the Gateway Area Project. It's been going on deaf ears, to be honest. And it just goes to show that while many issues continue to be raised within the city of Arcata, the Cal Poly Humboldt administrators seem as though that they are indifferent to address them. And they're essentially becoming more untrustworthy in rushing their expansion, which can seemingly put the lives of community members and students at risk. I urge the city council and city staff to continue in utilizing whatever positions of power they have to continue to raise any concerns to Cal Poly Humboldt in regards to their expansion of how it may affect the city overall. It's vital to raise these concerns, that way one day the awareness can be noticed. And perhaps it can be helpful for the city overall, long term. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
I'd like to direct you to Arcata One's website. There was a post last night from Fred. Basically, this is the same six minutes he gave to the Planning Commission with his meeting with Aldrin Lair, the leading expert in sea level rise in our area. So one of the things I wasn't aware of, the fact that since the 1850s, our bay has been actually dropping in elevation. So all it takes is like one foot of increase in sea level rise. It could be even what we've seen in the past with wind topping our levees, and we're going to have a big problem. And also addresses, you know, not only going over the levees, it's just intrusion from salt water that's going to affect. So I have spoken with the Coastal Commission, too. So this is something that should have been dealt with with our local planning probably about at least a year ago, because everything is, all your decisions were the general plan. And the gateway are writing on what the decision is going to be made by the Coastal Commission on this. So it always seems like that's like the last thing that you're going to be voting on, where really, in reality, it should be the first thing that you're voting on because you need to have that answer to address all these things. So it's not looking, I mean, I can't say how the Coastal Commission is going to rule on this, but it's not looking very good for building in that area because there's a simple fact that if you look at it from the standpoint of what the Coastal Commission, and they have a track record of using the figures of 100-year figure, not 30, 40 years, which I think that's the whole approach for the city of Arcata because I really had a hard time understanding how they would even want to build in this area because of that. So it's highly unlikely they're going to. So, it's highly unlikely they're going to prove, you know, they're going to okay this. So, a lot of money, a lot of time is spent in the last year with Planning Commission on this, and so I just think, I can't understand why this wasn't dealt with a long time ago. So, it's very frustrating to see this going on. I mean, we all want affordable housing, but we want it done in an area where it's not going to be a disaster for somebody. Basically, what you're doing is you're creating another lower G street in the future. It may not be in my lifetime, but it could be, you know, 70 years down the road. So, this is an issue that has to be addressed, and you have the experts in this area, so I can't quite understand why. You don't have to listen to me, but just call in these experts, and let's see what they have to say about this, so that you can make the right decision. Thank you.
My name's Joanne McGarry, and I had the opportunity last night to go to the Eureka City Council meeting. I like to go to them on occasion when I can, even though I have to drive my car, because there's no bus that comes back in time after a late meeting. But I do have the agenda here, and they do things a little bit differently there. One of the things they discussed was the complete streets and their transportation safety issues. They also discussed their local coastal plan, and they put together a really interesting and well, well, a good visual on the local coastal plan for that town. And so I suggest that we reach out to them and maybe see some of the slides that they have for that, as it might apply to us in terms of our discussion on our local coastal plan. I mean, we're different coastal than they are, more an urban coast and waterfront. But anyway, getting back to the Eureka City Council, the mayor took the opportunity to acknowledge the death of Justine Green, who was the woman found in the dumpster who died in the truck and ended up being found at Recology. And it was somebody she knew, and Mayor Burghel took the opportunity during the meeting to acknowledge her death as a human being, and we had a moment of silence, and it was very, very touching and moving and important to me to see the leadership of that community acknowledging the death of a human being in their community. And I brought this little visual that exemplifies all of us, and we're all just bunched together, and we don't necessarily recognize that we're all connected. And this is the big picture, and we really need to continue to recognize that we all are connected, and we need to be compassionate and stand in a circle of compassion for all the people in our community. So, I thank you for listening to me and letting me share what I experienced last night.
Thank you. Here are some items for the council to view or read on arcatoone.com. You have a portal, it's arcatoone.com/council. As Gregory mentioned, I spoke for six minutes about a conversation, two-hour conversation I had with Aldron Laird. The video is six minutes, there's a full transcription, which takes about four minutes to read, if you want to do that. The actual issue of sea level rise is likely to affect the lower portion of the Gateway Area in about 50 years, which is the, within the lifespan of a building that's built there. But the emerging groundwater problem is more immediate, it'll affect foundation, streets, trails, and more. That's expected in less than 20 years. A report from Alameda, Marin, San Francisco, and San Mateo last year about emerging groundwater, there are issues, 67 pages, but I summarized it in one page of bullet points, you can read it easily, see what they had to say. The full video of the Arcata Fire District presentation to the Planning Commission, I think some of you have seen it, it's on my website, and there's a really good three-minute video summary by Eric Black, it's fun to see. By coincidence, or so, I came across in Jonathan Swift Sculler's Travels, his book from 1726, he used a fictional map, and it's based on the Pacific Northwest, to show where Gulliver traveled. The Klamath River is there, you can identify Trinidad Head, and identify Arcata and Humboldt Bay. That's on my website also, it's kind of fun. He wrote the essay, "A Modest Proposal." It was based upon the terrible economic and social conditions in Ireland. There is homelessness, even people who were working couldn't afford food and rent. And what's said about that? It's a satire of government trying to fix things. The can-do spirit of the times led people to devise a number of illogical schemes that would purportedly solve social and economic ills. The last thing, in 49 seconds, I pretty much am fed up with the situation with the letters. It has failed, it's not working at all. I request a meeting with the city manager in the next 10 days to deal with this. It's disgusting. The purpose of the letters is not only to communicate to the city council, but it's to build community. If I write a letter and it is not published for two months after the item is on the agenda, it does not help community engagement. I think you can see that. It also, it's a situation that existed properly for decades, and it's broken. It can be easily fixed, it's not going to be hard. If you want to look at my website, you'll see an example of how I think letters should be handled, arcatoone.com. Thanks.
Thank you, Fred. Okay, I imagine we have a few comments online.
Looks like we just have one.
Okay.
Go ahead, Colin, use her.
Ken Swawski, I participate in the Humboldt County Forum, and sometimes I'm the only speaker at the meeting. It's kind of nice to have other people at the meetings. Risk management, I wanted to drop into something here, and had a public records request done, and it, some things were brought back to me. Here's a risk that I think you want to fix. You have an application for a special event request checklist. At the bottom of that particular thing, there is room for a signature by applicant and date. Either somebody whited this signature out and date, which is totally improper, it should be redacted in a normal manner, which another signature was. Apparently, this permit, nobody had to sign or the date, and that's a little bit distressing. You go down into the thing a little bit further here, and it has probably the most important part of this. It says, "Copies and approved permit must be in possession of person in charge of event at all times, all on." It goes on with a few things like that, but then it says, it says, "Agreement. The undersigned agrees to defend, protect, identify, and hold the city, its officers, official employees, agents, and volunteers free from harmless form and against any and all claims." This is an indemnification and holds harmless form. This is one of the biggest things that transfers the liability, along with an insurance policy, from the city over to the people. And again, this is, there's no signature and no date, it's not redacted, so all I can assume is that it never was signed. And that's really bothersome, because that's the crux of the whole matter. When I come down a little further on the thing, it says, has signed, it has conditions, it has a whole bunch of X's signed, and it has a whole bunch of boxes to be checked. None of those boxes are checked. Now, part of the problem may be that this was apparently signed by Karen Demme, city manager, and that is redacted, so I can't see if it's her who signed it or someone else, which I may or not be entitled to. But this event took place on 5/28 of 22, and her signature was 5/23 of 22. And it just seems to be rushed. It doesn't seem to have any of the signatures that would be required. There's major event recycling and waste diversion plan, that's not filled out at all. So maybe it wasn't appropriate to have that. And then you get down to later in the document, certificate of insurance, that appears to be in order. It's not enough to cover a $3.9 million settlement. I'd suggest to other people, they go ahead and up their insurance coverage from $2 million to, well, cover $3.9. And then I go down here, and it has all the routes listed, and in these routes listed, it has a signature place, where, in other words, there's a room for Netra to go ahead and sign these and date these things, and it says, "approved by," so I assume that should be signed and approved. There's no signatures or dates involved in that. But just, it's distressing not to see the required things provided. Thank you, Mike Alperdiunis, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, do you have any more public comment for items not on the agenda?
One more hand raised, go ahead, James, Jim?
I do believe this is going to bridge slightly over to the agenda, but I think it's at a reasonable amount. I just wanted to thank Commissioner White for thorough deliberation in the tenure center proposal and preparation for that. Your contribution is well appreciated. I also appreciate what all council members do. Councilmember White just sort of reinvigorates my belief of what councils should do in thoroughly studying and engaging and preparing for what they're asked to approve, and that includes funds. Anyway, that's all I have to say, and like I said, I appreciate what everybody does, but I think it's helpful to thoroughly vet things out, and I just feel like that was an example of it, and thank you to you all.
Thanks, Jim. No more online public comment. All right. Now we will move to item 13, which is council and staff reports, and the first thing under that is to receive a report from Arcata Police Sergeant Luke Scound and the community ambassadors on the community ambassador program. So, please, take the stage. We're very thankful to have you guys here, and thank you for waiting.
Hi. For those of you that don't know me or remember me, my name's Luke Scound, I'm a sergeant with the Arcata Police Department, and I'm managing the, your community ambassador program. So, here's some of your ambassadors, as well as these. Tonight, Laura, Fire, and Gene are here. I believe all of you probably know them, they're kind of fixtures here in Arcata, which is really good. The ambassadors out here in the streets are making a huge impact in just cleaning up a huge amount of the area. This is a picture of another one of the ambassadors, Isaac, out working on the plaza, cleaning up litter. Gene here on the pedestrian overhead down at 17th Street, cleaning up a large amount of litter that had been left behind. Gene is also on his own volition, taking on the task of doing a lot of general street cleaning. And so he spends a lot of time cleaning gutters, the gutters along the streets. He goes out there with a trash can and shovel, and is doing an amazing job. The kind of stuff that we, I never envisioned them doing, and I don't know that we thought they would be doing that stuff, but it's having a great impact. Some current challenges that we faced in the first four, four-ish months of this, this started back beginning of, we really got rolling in beginning of October, and some current challenges that we're facing, just really kind of come down to staffing and hours worked, just as far as getting, it's a part-time job, and it, there's quite a bit of management that goes into making sure that we have people there when they need to be, or when the city would like them, and that people are available and are not. And so, Fire's been doing a great job managing that. I really appreciate all the work he's done on that, that's been huge. One of the kind of unforeseen challenges that we've been dealing with is trash removal. They're cleaning up so much trash that we have to figure out how to handle that, and so we've had to figure out what to do with that, where to put those resources, and how to manage the removal of that. Just kind of general management supervision, given that this is a part-time position, and that it's new, it's taking quite, it takes a bit of my time to, probably more than I was expecting, to manage this process and to answer questions that come up, and make sure that we have appropriate supplies and things on hand, which goes into kind of the fourth thing here, just equipment supplies. They use a lot of stuff, which is good, but just things like gloves, they're using trash picker-uppers and shovels and different equipment like that, even things like as mundane as getting the, you know, water faucet key to be able to wash tools off and stuff. Those kinds of things we've had to address, and so a lot of those are becoming less frequent problems, but they were on the front-end things that we had to account for. Here are some of the, this is just a quick little representation of some of the statistics they've been keeping. Fire did a great job on the very front end of this, of realizing that he wanted to keep stats on things that the community ambassadors were doing. So each day as they go out, as they're out and about in the streets, they keep a rough tally of things that they're doing and interactions that they have. So here they have business, they've separated into different sections, and there's a couple more sections than this. But there's business, unhoused, trash, tourist interactions. One of the most impressive to me is the buckets full of trash that they've picked up. I keep coming back to the trash theme, but they have picked up an estimated 1,689 five-gallon buckets of trash. If you figure that's 10 pounds apiece roughly, that's like 8,000 pounds of trash. That's crazy, but somehow they're doing that. They're also out cleaning up needles, assisting the city in having better response as far as Public Works and things like that. They're calling Public Works when a need be, they're interacting with businesses, and just people out and about in the streets. And they also get a huge number of just people really pleased to see them, a lot of thank yous, a lot of glad to see you're here, and they'll attest to that. Impact on quality of life calls, kind of the more police side of this, while they are not a police force, it has had somewhat of an impact on us. I compared police calls for service from the four months that they have been active to the prior four months to them coming on. There's been about a 9% reduction in calls for service overall during that period. Part of that could just be weather, and I mean, there may be other things in here, we're coming into wintertime, there's other factors at play, but regardless, that is still something that has occurred. I also, these statistics were run specifically for the area in which they work, so kind of the downtown business district generally. There's been a 65% reduction in verbal disturbance calls, animal details, which would be, and so these following calls here, these are all calls that normally a police officer could get dispatched to, depending on what the details of that call were. And so, animal details, so complaints about a dog or something like that, down by 31%. Drunken publics, down by 24. Loud music complaints, down by 38%. And municipal code violations in general, or reports of, down by 37% in that specific area. I think that's pretty significant. I will, and again, this is a short period of time, this is four months, not a huge sample group, but we'll see. As time goes on, it's promising, I think. And this is some just general community impressions, things that ambassadors have heard, have been said to them when they're out and about in the streets, and I think I'll turn it over to Fire here if he wants to expand on this at all. You can speak to these things much more than I can.
You're going to have to come up. You can come up here if you want, or you can come up there.
Either way.
So, basically, sort of the foundation of our job is to create good relationships with everybody. So we're creating good relations with the homeless, with the local business people, with tourists, with the general public. And so, we have a lot of conversations. And so we have a lot of conversations with people. We have hundreds of conversations with people. And people, you know, tell us everything they're thinking about. And so, you know, two tourists from Berkeley, there's some, you know, we're from Berkeley. We come up here once a year to visit. We've never seen the plazas look so clean. Whatever you folks are doing up here, it's working. Thanks for all your delightful energy in Arcata all the time. Thank you for what you do. It's so much cleaner around here. I mean, we hear these things a lot. Arcata looks so much better now. It looked so dirty for so long. You guys are doing a great job. I appreciate that the ambassadors have shown up when I've called them while I waited for the police to come. This was a local business that was robbed. Thank you for all that you guys do. And I'm the tall guy with the dog, whose dog was hit by a truck. You were very nice to me, and you have since checked on me a few times. Thanks, I really appreciate it. It's really fascinating how we've sort of sunk into deeper and deeper relationships with people, especially the homeless. Just our modeling of picking up trash. We have the homeless asking us almost constantly, can we have a broom? Can we have a bucket? Can we have a trash picker? And so actually, out of my own pocket, I've begun to buy some of that equipment that I can give to them. I'm going to turn over to Laura and Jean here for a minute too, if you want to have something to say. Yeah, that would be great.
I would just like love to hear from each of you just about the experience and what it's been like and what you think is just has been the highlight and what maybe, you know, you guys would need or want to improve the program perhaps.
I will say that we give away, we buy on the city's dime, and we give away a lot of trash bags because homeless people use them to cover up their clothing, to use as raincoats, various things like that. We've started buying cases of water so we can give away bottles of water to people. We do that on our own dime. What else? We're working to connect people with social services. I think that the homeless in particular are really surprised, or were surprised in the beginning when they thought we were probably law enforcement. And we've really impressed upon them, yes, we work for the police department. We're not police. We're not law enforcement. We're not security guards. We're just here to be helpful. And so in the beginning, just one example, things would just be trashed. And I would start going around asking, you know, do you have any trash you'd like to put in the bucket? And at first, people were a little bit leery. And then they started doing it a little bit when I came around. And now I just have to walk by and they're like rushing me. I've got some stuff, hold on. I've got some, I've got cigarette butts. I've got this, I've got that. And so just us being calm with them and just speaking with them like people, not as law enforcement, not as anybody who's angry with them, not as anybody who's yelling at them, but just talking with them. How are you doing? Is there anything I can do to help you?
So I just wanted, you know, Jean, you mentioned something about all the trash that's where it comes from on the Seventeenth Bridge. I don't know if you want to bring that up.
Well, I think some of the trash I pick up on the Seventeenth Street footbridge I think does get pulled out of some of the dumpsters and trash cans out there. Actually, what I was going to address a little bit is what we're doing out there is we're, you know, you wouldn't think at first, you know, pulling the weeds out of the gutters and off the sidewalks, picking up the trash here and there would make too much of a difference. But it's showing pride and ownership in our community. And there's a population on the plaza that sometimes we'll look at and think, well, what are they doing here? And historically, we haven't given them the time of day and whatnot. With them seeing us out there, you know, making an effort, putting the effort in to take pride in our community and make a difference and show that we really care and giving them the time of day and whatnot, that pride of ownership and community is rubbing off on them. Yeah, we've all heard the loud yelling that they'll have at each other out there at times. It's, I've seen it change sometimes that, yeah, they're still kind of yelling at each other, but they're yelling at each other to pick up their trash. Hey, pick that stuff up. Don't be throwing it down there. And it's the little things like that that are, you know, we're just looking at baby steps here. If we can make a difference a little bit here and there, this is not, this is not something that we can fix or going to make a change overnight. This is a long-term change of philosophy, change of thinking. And each little step is a victory that we have. And it's been really exciting. It's been neat getting to know the people out there. You know, I'm former retired business owner. I'm part of the institution. So there is, you know, I'm the old clean-cut kind of guy with the long ponytail now, but, and it's taken a little bit to have some of the plaza folks warm up to me, but I have gotten a chance to meet them and know them. And there's actually some really good people though. Yes, we're all sometimes dealing with issues and hard times, but there's a lot of really good people out there, and the number of troublemakers are actually a lot smaller than I think. I hear comments of, yeah, well, I'm afraid to come down to the plaza. I realize, I don't think it's really fear that people are having of coming down to the plaza. They're uncomfortable. And what are they, they're uncomfortable because they don't understand. They don't know. I think if people had to take more of an opportunity to get out there, they'll find that their fear is really at uncomfort level, and they can work on that, and we can all work together. So I'm hoping to see more of that cooperation between the population out there, the community, the businesses, the city, the city workers, the police, and everything. So that's kind of what I envision how this program is going forward to. And it's great to actually have somebody come in and go, oh, can you tell me how to get to Wildwood Music? I need new guitar strings. And being able to offer those services as well. And I think Laura's got a great story of some success stories of outreach to some of our folks out there that we've encountered and worked with.
So I just want to say thank you so much for this job. When Stacy came up with this or mentioned it to me, I did a lot of research out of the area, and I was so excited to be part of a program that just brings community together. So it's about all of us finding purpose, and it's a great purpose for me and joining with other business owners as well as people in our community, housed and unhoused. So for me, it's been about making connections and being consistent, checking in all the businesses, checking in all the people that are around when they're not there. My thing that I really like doing is connecting people with resources. So there was one man who's had a really bad infection on his foot, and at this moment, he's had a lot of medical treatment, and he's housed right now. And so helping him, advocate with him to get into a different place, it's just one person at a time. And also explaining to people when there's issues going on and not knowing. So it's really about, just for me, community, working together with people. Law enforcement, people on the street, business owners, community members. We're all people, we're all the same. And so it's just, it's a joy. And I love greeting people and just saying, how's it going? Have a great day, whatever. So thanks for the job. Hope we're doing well. If there's anything you want to say, let Luke know.
I do want to answer your question as far as what can you do to help us? We need a couple of trash cans in North Town. That is the big deal. We walk around with five-gallon buckets, and there's so much trash that we easily fill it just walking to North Town. And then we're carrying this heavy bucket all the way back to the dumpster at the bus station or to the trash cans on the plaza. And so if we just had a place where we could dump trash in North Town, it would just make our job so much easier. Other than that, I think things are going pretty well.
So Fire, excuse me, do you think there's anyone in North Town that happens to have a dumpster that would allow you to use it? I was just thinking in that area where the burger store stars, you know, that little area there?
It's possible. I've not wanted to ask anybody because I didn't want to, as a city employee, make them feel like maybe they were pressured to allow us to use their dumpster. So I just, so I haven't asked anybody.
Because I would think that we could work out, well, I don't know. Maybe arrangement could be worked out, that you could use their dumpster when you're up in North Town and that they would get a certain amount of money paid each month to them for that use.
If we could work that out, I'd be happy to speak to some business owners up there. I know several.
That's just a thought.
Yeah. But I would just want to know that I'm given permission to do that and that maybe I have something to offer to them.
I think that's an excellent idea, Alex. I know that businesses, most of the time, are all too eager to participate, cooperate. I know in Valley West, we have both of the gas stations out there willing to do it. We have Raze who's willing to let us put some trash in their cans. So I'm sure that it's not a big ask, and they'd be happy to help. And they're very pleased that you're cleaning up that end of the town anyway.
It's a big ask in as far as we pick up a lot of trash. So the dumpster by the Arcata House Annex probably gets completely filled at least twice a week. I mean, we pick up a lot of trash. And so it would be a substantial ask. But if we could say something like, the city will pick up half the tab for your dumpster, or, you know, something, that would be equitable. If the city was willing, then that would probably work out.
We'd definitely work something out, so.
Okay. We'll talk.
I say thank you so much for all that you do. It's great to see you out and about all the time. I really appreciate it.
You guys are getting lots of shout-outs. I got a specific one with a picture of you, Laura, so asking, who is this community ambassador? What's her name? Do you know her? And I said, that's Laura, that you were doing a fantastic job, and we're just so welcoming and, you know, so.
And thank you, Fire, for showing up immediately after the earthquake and dealing with the windows on the west side of the plaza.
Sure.
I've heard incredible compliments about what you do. You guys are doing great. We need you in Valley West. And I know it's a pilot project, and it's only two years. But just to kind of point out that with the two Home Key projects, we're 135 individual units. That's approximately 150 to 180 new residents. The Comfort Inn has Cal Poly Humboldt of 100 residents. We have 18 RVs parked out in Valley East alone. But you know that, you know, the people who give the most are those who have the least. So they're opening up their RVs for people who have no way to get out of the elements. So sometimes there's three to five people in an RV. So that's adding another 50 individuals. We have a new housing development that was just approved by our planning commission. That's 23 new units. Most of these are going to be not only single, but two and three bedrooms, which is another 40 individuals. That's looking at about 350 new individuals, not just in one neighborhood, but in one city block. So, and not to mention, we do have about 70, actually more than 70 businesses in Valley West, North Arcata. So just putting that on the radar that as you get moving through this pilot project, we'd love some love over in our neck of the woods.
Well, that means we get to fund it.
Yeah, I don't think there's any question in our mind that Valley West needs ambassadors. It is a matter of funding. And then we've also been talking a little bit just among ourselves about, would it be possible to put some of the paid ambassadors in Valley West and then fill in some of the holes with volunteers? But one of our concerns is that because it takes time to develop relationships with people, and volunteers tend to come and go, we're not sure that that would work. So, you know, we're aware of the need. We want to fill the need. We're just not sure how best to go about it.
I just wanted to thank all of you for participating in the program and also for Sergeant Scound for doing a great job overseeing it. But also, when we were trying to work to come up with a program, we were having a difficult time getting someone to actually come and develop and write the program. And Chief Ahern stepped up and did that for us so that we could get this going, or we might still not even have people out there. So I just really want to acknowledge the chief, and thank you for doing that for us. And also, I really appreciate the statistical component because when we're looking for funding, those are the numbers that we need, and that was really important to me from the beginning. So thank you for keeping up on that. And it was, the goal from the beginning is, I'm glad that it is being successful because we didn't know if it would be. So was, we hope that this is successful and that people are excited about it and that we can find funding and expand it to all, you know, all the important areas of the city, not just the downtown. So that's definitely, I think, the goal of that. And you guys really are so popular. I was just saying the other day, I think these are the new rock stars of Arcata. So, you know, you might be giving out autographs pretty soon. So who knew, right? Thank you.
Did we actually get to the end of this PowerPoint? Is it at the end? Okay, I didn't quite know. We kind of got off asking questions and talking. Okay. Any more comments, folks, or questions for our ambassadors? That is just a really nice note to end the evening on. So thank you guys for holding out, and thank you for all that you do for our community and everybody. So, thank you. Yeah, I want to talk. All right. And that will take us to, don't forget, we have a closed session after this. Are there any other staff updates or council updates?
You know, I would like, I have a, can I go through my list? Okay, I'm sorry to do this. If I can go first. Okay, so I really thought, I went to the Missing and Murdered Indigenous People Conference that was here. And I was really happy to see that they've gotten $350,000 grant from the San Miguel Band of the Mission Indians to support ongoing initiative to have someone do their investigation. That was one of the big things. They didn't have any investigators. So I thought that was excellent. I also had an opportunity to ride with Officer Bella Real. And that was most interesting. I rode with her for about two hours. And if you have chances, it would be fun to do that, I think. I figured out what Gregory was talking about by loud music. I've heard from another citizen that lives up in the area of H and 16th Street, and it's the cars. It's the loud cars and the music coming out of the cars. I know, I went to phone, the last phone meeting, and one of the things we're going to get a letter from is about the camping that's going on at the marsh. They're very concerned about what it's doing to the environmental issues. Another item is that we had a presentation from the people that came to talk to us about providing needles, clean needles. And they do that on South I Street, just at the foot of the marsh, where we have that great big sign that's a concrete block wall that's, it's actually brown. And that's where they're doing it. And they all, there's often, I was talking to George, and he was saying that he picks up after them, and he picks up needles, and he picked up recently a pack of needles, a whole pack of needles that hadn't been used. So that sort of worries me, and I haven't gone out to talk to them about it, but I plan on doing it. I just want people to realize that Cal Poly was, used to be Humboldt State, 1914. And so it's not a new university or a new thing. It's been here for years, and it's made a big difference for many of us that live here. And I hear people, I feel like we hear a lot of people calling in, and maybe they don't have the whole picture. My final thing is, I went to the planning commission meeting, sat in the back, and I listened to the presentation from the fire department. And I felt like after that presentation by their, our representative in Arcata, Eric Louden Slasher, or Slager, and is that right now, they can't really handle what we have going on in Arcata, period. So it made me think about, and he did a presentation slide that showed what all the different regions did and how that when you look at the funding mechanism or the amount of money that each district gets, like Humboldt Fire, they can do a lot more on less money. And I would like the council to have an opportunity for our city staff to actually talk to Humboldt Fire. I'm thinking maybe it's time for us to think about a regional fire department. And we know the fire departments all give aid to one another. But possibly this is the time for Arcata to just talk to Humboldt Fire, and maybe we need to think about regionalism because our fire department relies on a parcel tax, and that came up, Fred mentioned that today, and I think it's $174. And one of the things that was mentioned by Eric is that we should consider, he mentioned urban sprawl, and that that would bring them more money. But we know how costly urban sprawl would be for us, and that's not been something that Arcata's ever really looked at, wanting to have urban sprawl. We thought about infill, and now we're looking at, we're going to have to go up. So I just wanted to mention those things. Thank you for my report, being able to give one. And I would like to know if there's any interest. Oh, I have one other. Oh, I have one other thing. The League of Cities, I think we should contact them, because we can't be the only community in California dealing with fire issues as we currently have with a department or a district, but it's not a department, a district that is having difficulty meeting personnel needs, et cetera. And maybe we can get some information from other entities about how they're doing it, and then I would really like us to have a chance to talk to Humboldt Fire Department. So, thank you.
Down the line, sorry.
You're next.
Okay. I kind of wanted to wait to the end, but I just would like to acknowledge the horrific tragedy that happened yesterday on Alliance, and my heart goes out to those families. They were two Cal Poly Humboldt students, one of which did not make it. And I was just hoping that we might just have a moment of silence to acknowledge them, as well as our two unhoused individuals, Nancy Barnes, and then more recently, Justine Green.
Thank you. Yeah, we can adjourn with a moment of, well, I guess we're adjourning to closed session, but we can adjourn with a moment of silence, yes. My update today, I had my first meeting on the Equity Arcata Advisory Team. It was really invigorating. There are definitely some changes to that program and just the structure going on, but also a lot of exciting things happening with just different community partners, and a lot of great work with the, a really great partnership with Cal Poly Humboldt with the Office of Diversity and Inclusion, and just the people that they bring to the table on that too. And so it was just really an enlightening and just reinvigorating meeting to be a part of, and I'm just looking forward to serving on that team. It'll be really exciting. And then as well, I'll be attending some sessions, meeting with some of the offshore wind partners, especially about the harbor updates that will be happening with Crowley Partners, I think is the name of the group that got the lease to do the harbor updates. So more to come on that, but I've been into the wind, so I'm gonna keep going with it.
Thanks, Sarah. I had the Houseless Services Group today. I took about six pages of incredible things that Arcata Health Partnership is doing. I'm not going to go through everything, but just agency-wide, they've served 55,326 meals, have had 250,000 pounds of food, 8,442 shelter bed nights across Arcata, and 83 people have moved from shelter to housing. They're really desperate for volunteers, and we can, if we get enough volunteers, you can do a training on Zoom, we can arrange a training for people that want to help out. They're just desperate for volunteers. Also, the Arcata Chamber Leadership Awards is February 18th.
I've had a quieter month. I've had some meetings be canceled for lack of a quorum, so I don't really have a whole lot to report out. So thanks to all of you for those.
And now, before we adjourn to our closed session, we will take a brief moment of silence just to reflect on the lost members of our community. So thank you, everybody.